जय मु पोंधू मन्नी ईसु चेप्पे नु जय मु पोंधू मन्नी ईसु चेप्पे नु जय इन्छु वारे स्वास्थ्य मोंदे दरु जय इन्छु वारे स्वास्थ्य मोंदे दरु जय मु पोंधू मन्नी ईसु चेप्पे नु जय मु पोंधू मन्नी ईसु चेप्पे नु जय वंतुले दईवा परदेशु लो नुन्ना जय वंतुले दईवा परदेशु लो नुन्ना जीव वृक्ष पल्ला मुनु बुजिंथुरु जीव वृक्ष पल्ला मुनु बुजिंथुरु रेंडवा मरणमुनु ताटे दरु रेंडवा मरणमुनु ताटे दरु जय मु पोंधू मन्नी ईसु चेप्पे नु जय मु पोंधू मन्नी ईसु चेप्पे नु जय इन्छु वारे स्वास्थ्य मोंदे दरु जय इन्छु वारे स्वास्थ्य मोंदे दरु जय मु पोंधू मन्नी ईसु चेप्पे नु जय मु पोंधू मन्नी ईसु चेप्पे नु
पढ़ते नम्मा कल्प्त पढ़ते नम्मा रेंड्रेन्स अल्लोहिस नगाबटी ओक्सर विनित तरो तकला कल्प्त पढ़ने गेट्टी पढ़ने फुट पढ़ वर्क स्टार्टिंग
जय मु पोंधू मन्नी ईसु चेप्पे नु जय मु पोंधू मन्नी ईसु चेप्पे नु जय इन्छु वारे स्वास्थ्य मोंदे दरु जय इन्छु वारे स्वास्थ्य मोंदे दरु जय मु पोंधू मन्नी ईसु चेप्पे नु जय मु पोंधू मन्नी ईसु चेप्पे नु जय वंतुले दईवा परदेशु लो नुन्ना जय वंतुले दईवा परदेशु लो नुन्ना जीव वृक्ष मुनु बुजिंथुरु जीव वृक्ष पल्ला मुनु बुजिंथुरु रेंडवा मरणमुनु जय रेंडवा मरणमुनु ताटे दरु जय मु पोंधू मन्नी ईसु चेप्पे नु जय मु पोंधू मन्नी ईसु चेप्पे नु मरुगयन मन्ना निच्छि मरी तेल राति निच्छु मरुगयन मन्ना निच्छि मरी तेल राति निच्छु आ राति मीदा क्रोत्ता पेरुंडु आ राति मीदा क्रोत्ता पेरुंडु एरि गेदरु धानि पोंधु आरले एरि गेदरु धानि पोंधु आरले जय मु पोंधू मन्नी ईसु चेप्पे नु जय मु पोंधू मन्नी ईसु चेप्पे नु एवरु वंतामु वरको सिरमुगनिल चेदारो एवरु वंतामु वरको सिरमुगनिल चेदारो एले रुजनुलानु अधिकारुलै एले रुजनुलानु अधिकारुलै इन्नु पदंडमु तोपरि पालिंचेदारो इन्नु पदंडमु तोपरि पालिंचेदारो जय मु पोंधू मन्नी ईसु चेप्पे नु जय मु पोंधू मन्नी ईसु चेप्पे नु दवलावस्त्रामुलानु तरिंपा चय्यु वारीकी दवलावस्त्रामुलानु तरिंपा चय्यु वारीकी जीव ग्रंध मुन्ना पेरो तुडुव बाडुदु जीव ग्रंध मुन्ना पेरो तुडुव बाडुदु देव दुतला यदुचा कनत कलुगु देव दुतला यदुचा कनत कलुगु जय मु पोंधू मन्नी ईसु चेप्पे नु जय मु पोंधू मन्नी ईसु चेप्पे नु आले संभमुगा वारी देवोडु आले संभमुगा वारी देवोडु निलिपिति रारचि जीविंछु निलिपिति रारचि जीविंछु नूसना इर्षाले मनि रायु वारिपै नूसना इर्षाले मनि रायु वारिपै जय मु पोंधू मन्नी ईसु चेप्पे नु जय मु पोंधू मन्नी ईसु चेप्पे नु वारी देवोडु सिम्मासना मुपैन वारी देवोडु सिम्मासना मुपैन गूछुन्न बेट्टी जीवा मकुटमिच्छु गूछुन्न बेट्टी जीवा मकुटमिच्छु वारसुलै नित्यमुगा जीविंथुरु वारसुलै नित्यमुगा जीविंथुरु जय मु पोंधू मन्नी ईसु चेप्पे नु जय मु पोंधू मन्नी ईसु चेप्पे नु जय इन्छु वारे स्वास्थ्य मोंदे दरु जय इन्छु वारे स्वास्थ्य मोंदे दरु जय मु पोंधू मन्नी ईसु चेप्पे नु जय मु पोंधू मन्नी ईसु चेप्पे नु
चेवरो पढ़ पढ़ते नम्मा सॉन्ग नंबर 5 सॉन्ग नंबर 5
अन्नी टीलो नत्यदिका जय मुनन अन्नी टीलो नत्यदिका जय मुनन दुछुन्नाम मनल्ला प्रेमिंचिन ईसु कृष्टु प्रभु द्वारन मनल्ला प्रेमिंचिन ईसु कृष्टु प्रभु द्वारन कन्नु कगु परचिन विजयमुन्नक सन्नु तिन्तु कन्नु कगु परचिन विजयमुन्नक सन्नु तिन्तु अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी प्रभु अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी परलोका मंदुनु भूमि मीदनु परलोका मंदुनु भूमि मीदनु नीवु अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी
इधि अधिकारम पोंदियन्ति वी वा मी गादु इट्स हिंदी में 132 हिंदी में 132 अधिकारम पोंदियन्ति वी प्रभु प्रभु के जप्त नम्मा एस प्रभु का अधिकारम नीवु अधिकारम पोंदिच्छि साधो कट नियंबित कण्डी पढ़ते नम्मा कल्प्त पढ़ते नम्मा
अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी परलोका मंदुनु भूमि मीदनु परलोका मंदुनु भूमि मीदनु नीवु अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी अन्नी टीलो नत्यदिका जय मुनन अन्नी टीलो नत्यदिका जय मुनन दुछुन्नाम
ओक्सर पढ़ते नम्मा
अन्नी टीलो नत्यदिका जय मुनन दुछुन्नाम अन्नी टीलो नत्यदिका जय मुनन दुछुन्नाम अन्नी टीलो नत्यदिका जय मुनन दुछुन्नाम मनल्ला प्रेमिंचिन ईसु कृष्टु प्रभु द्वारन मनल्ला प्रेमिंचिन ईसु कृष्टु प्रभु द्वारन कन्नु कगु परचिन विजयमुन्नक सन्नु तिन्तु कन्नु कगु परचिन विजयमुन्नक सन्नु तिन्तु
चाला फास्ट लाइन कोण स्लो बदल कोण स्लो बदल
अन्नी टीलो नत्यदिका जय मुनन दुछुन्नाम अन्नी टीलो नत्यदिका जय मुनन दुछुन्नाम मनल्ला प्रेमिंचिन ईसु कृष्टु प्रभु द्वारन अन्नी टीलो नत्यदिका जय मुनन दुछुन्नाम कन्नु कगु परचिन विजयमुन्नक सन्नु तिन्तु कन्नु कगु परचिन विजयमुन्नक सन्नु तिन्तु अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी प्रभु अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी परलोका मंदुनु भूमि मीदनु परलोका मंदुनु भूमि मीदनु प्रभु अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी विश्वसिंचु मनयंदु तन विश्वसिंचु मनयंदु तन शक्ति निगुच्छि अपरमितमैना प्रभावमुनु एरि गियुन्नाम अपरमितमैना प्रभावमुनु एरि गियुन्नाम तिरिगिले चिना प्रभु नुच्चि हार्षिंचेदाम तिरिगिले चिना प्रभु नुच्चि हार्षिंचेदाम अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी परलोका मंदुनु भूमि मीदनु परलोका मंदुनु भूमि मीदनु नीवु अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी मनल्लनु भरपरचु प्रभु नंदु मनल्ला भलपरचु प्रभु नंदु भलमुनन्दुचु प्रभु कंपेनु कार्यमुनु चय्युचुन्तिमी प्रभु कंपेनु कार्यमुनु चय्युचुन्तिमी तनदु पुनरोत्तानान भलमुनु पडमेपुडु तनदु पुनरोत्तान भलमुनु पोगडमेपुडु अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी प्रभु अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी परलोका मंदुनु भूमि मीदनु परलोका मंदुनु भूमि मीदनु नीवु अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी मरणमुलो समावाना भामु कलिगियु कृष्ट मरणमुलो समावाना भामु कलिगियु कष्ट नष्टमुलो पालिवारंड एरि गियु कष्ट नष्टमुलो पारिवागमाउट एरि गियु आत्मप्राण शरीरमुलतु आरदिन्तु आत्मप्राण शरीरमुलतु आरदिन्तु अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी प्रभु अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी परलोका मंदुनु भूमि मीदनु परलोका मंदुनु भूमि मीदनु प्रभु अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी मनल्ल चित्तृसंघ तेन्ति मनल्ल सिरपरचिन नक्ति गलाचे मुनिति तनदु प्रिय पूछुडु ईसु कृष्ट द्वारने तनकु तनदु प्रिय पूछुडु ईसु कृष्ट द्वारने तनकु निरस्तम्मुनु माई मगनत्ता हलिलिया आमेन निरस्तम्मुनु माई मागनत्ता हलिलिया आमेन अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी परलोका मंदुनु भूमि मीदनु परलोका मंदुनु भूमि मीदनु नीवु अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी अधिकारमु पोंदियन्तिमी
नेक्स्ट टाइम इनका बाने चुक्ना बैर बैर ती वेलु कर्वा
ईसु नी वाकु नित्यमुदे लेति मरी नामुलु गुप्य कश्यामु गतिं चिहानु आराजु पल्लु आराजु दुदाके वारे नहि तालेगे जो कुछ भिगे ले रहेंगे आकर उच्चाय रस्मा गेतारे जो भी वारे राहेंगे
वी प्रेस गॉड फॉर द वंडरफुल टाइम ऑफ़ वर्षिप एंड ब्रेकिंग ऑफ़ डी ब्रेड एंड मिनिस्ट्री ऑफ़ गॉड्स वर्ड विच गॉड गेव अस यस्टरडे
निन्नटि दिनम्मन्ना प्रभु अद्भुतमयन टुड़ी आराधन समयम मर्यो प्रतिविरुच्च समयम मर्यो देवनु वाक्यम यक्का पर्चरी यक्का समयम मन कनु ग्रहिंचन दुकोरकै प्रभु कोण नाचले सिट्टु नाम
टुडे वी आर गोइंग तू स्टार्ट द थीम
इधि नाना मन सीर्षिका वचनमु गुरुच्छि यक्का ध्यानमुनु आरंभिंचुकुन्नाम
सो शाल वी टर्न तू द थीम वर्स विच इस रेवेलेशन चैप्टर 21 एंड वर्स 7
प्रक्टिण ग्रंदमु इरवै ओकटो अध्यायमु एड़ो वचनमु मन सीर्षिका वचनमु दायचेसी मन चदुकुन्नाम
शाल वी रीड इट ऑल चुकदा
प्रक्टिणा इरवै ओकटो अध्यायम एड़ो वचनमु अंदरुम कल्लिसी चदुकुन्नामण्डी अंदरुम कल्लिसी
रेवेलेशन 21 7 ही डेट ओवरकमर
जय इन्छु वारु गीतिनी स्वतंत्रिंचुकुनु नेन तेनिकी देवुडै युदुनु अतदु नाकु कुमारुडै युदुनु
शाल वी बी शाल वी प्रेय
प्रार्थिंचुकुन्नामण्डी
हेमली फादर रिटर्नल गॉड वी थैंक यू एंड प्रेस यू एंड वर्षिप यू फॉर डी वे डी लॉड आस बीन विथ अस यस्टरडे डियर लॉड एंड वी थैंक यू फॉर डी एक्सटेंसिव अरेंजमेंट ताई सर्वेंट एंड कोवर्कर्स एंड डी चर्च डी मेंबर्स ऑफ़ डी चर्च गोथ ब्रदर्स एंड सिस्टर्स फादर आएव मेड तू मेक दिस फ्यू डेज स्पेशल मीटिंग डी कल्मिनेशन इस ऑन वेनेस्ट डे इवनिंग व्हेन वी हैव एन मीटिंग आत्ता टाइम वी सेलिब्रेट वी थैंक वी हियर टेस्टिमनीज वी लुक फॉरवर्ड फॉर प्रॉमिसेस फॉर फ्यूचर ऑल दिस थिंग्स डियर लॉड नो डियर लॉड वी थैंक यू फॉर यस्टरडे इस मीटिंग्स एंड वी कम तू ती फॉर डी मीटिंग्स विच इस तू टेक प्लेस टुडे मॉर्निंग एंड अलसो इवनिंग एंड अलसो टुमारो मॉर्निंग एंड इवनिंग एंड अलसो डे आफ्टर टुमारो प्रेय डेट ताई प्रेसेंस मेबी विथ अस एंड डियर लॉड आफ्टर एन आवर वी वुड लाइक तू हैव एन शॉर्ट ब्रेक एंड अगेन कंटिन्यू डियर लॉड वी थैंक यू प्रेस यू वर्षिप यू वी गिव यू ऑल ग्लोरी वी थैंक यू फॉर डी गुड नाइट रेस्ट विच यू गेव अस थैंक यू फॉर डी गुड फूड विच यू गेव अस वी प्रेय फॉर ऑल दोस्ट वुड नॉट हैव सच गुड रेस्ट ड्यू तू सम रीजंस और अदर एंड अलसो दोस्ट वुड नॉट हैव सच गुड फूड फादर वी थैंक यू फॉर डी लव द ऑफ़ ताई पीपल नो डियर लॉड वी कम तू ती ऑन बिहाफ ऑफ़ दिस थीम विच वी आर गोइंग तू मेडिटेट ड्यूरिंग डी नेक्स्ट फ्यू डेज प्रेय डेट तौ में कंट्रोल माई थॉट्स कंट्रोल माई वर्ड्स फादर इट इस कंटिन्यूअस मिनिस्ट्री इन डी मॉर्निंग एंड अलसो इन डी इवनिंग बट वी थैंक यू एलिट्यूल टाइम ऑफ़ रेस्ट इन बिटवीन बिकॉज़ ऑफ़ डी वीकनेस इन डी बॉडी डियर लॉड सो वी प्रेय डेट तौ में स्ट्रंटन ताई सर्वेंट फादर वी बाइंड ऑल पॉवर्स ऑफ़ डार्कनेस इन डी नाम ऑफ़ ईससु क्रिस्ट एंड बाई फाइट वी स्टैंड ऑन डी विक्टरी स्टैंड अलोंग विथ डी रिसरकेटर लॉड ईससु क्रिस्ट एंड मेक दिस प्रेयर इन डी नाम एंड फॉर डी ग्लोरी ऑफ़ डी लॉड ईससु क्रिस्ट अमेन वर्स 21 रेवेलेशन चैप्टर 21 एंड वर्स 7 इस अन वेरी सिंबल स्टेटमेंट
प्रक्टिण ग्रंदमु इरवै ओकटो अध्यायम एड़ो वचनमु इवचनमु एंथो सरलमयन टुड़ी माटल्ले गलिन टुड़ी वचनमु
दिस इस दिस कम्स ऑलमोस्ट आत्ता एंड ऑफ़ डी बुक ऑफ़ रेवेलेशन
इधि प्रक्टिण ग्रंदमु यक्का चिवरी अध्यायलुण्डी इमाटो स्तावंदी
इट रीड्स लाइक दिस आई विल रीड डी फर्स्ट पार्ट एंड आई विल फॉर डी प्रेसेंट आई विल लीव डी सेकंड पार्ट
मनमु मनक इस समयम यक्का ध्यानमु कुरकै इवचनम यक्का मोदिटी बागम मात्रमे मन चुद्दाम तरवती बागमु तरवत चुद्दाम
ही डेट ओवरकमर्स शाल इन्हरिट ऑल थिंग्स
जय इन्छु वारु वीटिनी स्वतंत्रिंचुकुनु
सो देयर आर टू वर्ड्स विच कम्स आउट इन दिस वर्स
इमाटलो रेंडु पदमुलो प्रत्येकंगा मन गमनिंचाली
वन इस ओवरकमिंग
मोदिटी दिस जय इन्छुटा
डी सेकंड इस इन्हरिट
रेंडो दिस स्वतंत्रिंचुकुनुटा
सो इफ वी ओवरकम
मनमु जय इन्छु एप्परैति जयस्ताम
व्हाट इस ओवरकमिंग हुम वी हैव तू ओवरकम हो कैन वी ओवरकम ऑल डेट वी विल सी लेटर
जय इन्छुटान्टि एन्दी योरनी जय इन्छुटा यो एलागु जय इन्छुटा अन्नटिडी विषयालु मन तरवत चुस्ताम
बट लेट अस केप इन डी माइंड इफ वी ओवरकम
आइथे मनमु मनस्लोंचको अलस्नटि नी माटिन्डिति ओक्का वेलम मनमु जय इन्छुनट्लाइथे
वी विल इन्हरिट ऑल थिंग
मनमु अन्निटिनी समस्तमुनु स्वतंत्रिंचुकुन्नाम
दिस अन प्रॉमिस फ्रॉम गॉड
इधि मन देवनुण्डी मनक वाक्यनटुड़ी वाक्यदानमु
आफ्टर ऑल डी बुक्स इन डी बाइबुल आस बीन रिटर्न एंड इवन रेवेलेशन इस रिटर्न
बाइबुल नटुड़ी ग्रंदम लन्नी गुड़ा तरवत चेवरीका प्रक्टिण ग्रंदम अंत गुड़ा रायबडिन्ना तरवत
ही मेक्स अन प्रॉमिस
इकड़ा प्रभु ओक्का वाक्यदानमु चेस्तावुनार
आ यू आर माई सन
नीवु नाकु मारुड़ु
एंड आई ऑल व्हाट आई हैव विल गो तू माई सन
नाकु कलिन अदन्त गुड़ा नाकु मारुणुकु स्वास्थ्यमु गल्द
आज वी हैव सीन यस्टरडे एंड अदर वे अलसो वी नो ही आर ओवरली वन सन एंड ही डाइड ऑन डी क्रॉस एंड बिकॉज़ ऑफ़ विच मेनी सन्स आप कम इन डी ग्लोरी
मनक तेलसु अंत अंत यक्कन निन्नटि दिनाना मन चूस्यम मन देवनुकी एकै एक कुमारुडु ओके कुमारुड्टुनाडु आ ओक्का कुमारुण्डु वारगा देवुडु अन्येकुलानु तन कुमारुलगा आयन चेस्कुन्नाडी कुमारुण्डु वारा
सो गॉड आर ओवरली वन पर्सन वु कैन लेजिटिमेटली से डेट आई इन्हरिट एवरीथिंग ऑफ़ माई फादर एंड डेट इस लॉड ईससु क्रिस्ट
ओके मन ओके व्यक्ति नातन्री यक्का स्वास्थ्यमंतन्नी नेनु स्वतंत्रिंचुको गलु अन्चपगलिन वाडु आयन ईसु कृष्ट प्रभावु आयन ओकडे इट्टी माटा चपगलिन अधिकारंगलिन वाडु न्यायबंधका चटबंधका चपगलिन अधिकारंगल वाडु
यस्टरडे मॉर्निंग ड्यूरिंग डी वर्षिप मैसेज अलसो डेट वर्स केम फ्रॉम हिब्रूस चैप्टर 1 एंड वर्स 2 एंड 3 डेट ही इन्हरिट ऑल थिंग्स
निन्नटि दिनाना आराधन समयमलो हिब्रिल क्राष्ट्रिपत्रिका ओकटो अध्यायम रेंडु मुड़ वचनालो आयन समस्तमुनकु वारस्तुगा चेवडुनु अन्यटिटिटि माटा मनमु गमनिंचाम
बट वी नो डेट वी आर वी आयव अलसो बिकम इस चिल्ड्रन वी आयव अलसो बिकम इस सन्स
अधिकार मनमु आयन कुमारुडगानु कुमारतेलगा मनमु चेबड्डामु अन्ना संगति गुड़ा मनक तेलसिंदे
सो डी लॉड आस मेड अस इस चिल्ड्रन एंड इफ चिल्ड्रन देन हेयर्स
प्रभु मनल्ली तन पिललुगा चेस्कुन्नाडु मनमु पिललम आइथे आयन वारस्तुलम
आ बट हिस सन वस अन ओवरकमर
आइथे आयन कुमारुडु आयन जय इन्छु वाड़युन्नाडु
आ वी नो डेट ही ओवरकेम
मनक तेलसु आयन समस्तमुनु जय इन्छुनट्नाडु
इन जॉन चैप्टर 16 एंड वर्स 33 ही साइज आई हैव ओवरकम डी वर्ल्ड
योहान्सु वातपदा हारो देमु पै मुड़ो वचनलो नेनु लोकमुनु जय इन्छुन्नानु अनि
आई हैव ओवरकम डी वर्ल्ड
नेनु लोकमुनु जय इन्छुन्नानु
इन डी बुक ऑफ़ रेवेलेशन एंड चैप्टर 3 एंड वर्स 19 20 21 डोस वर्सेस देयर अलसो फाइन ही इन्हरिटेड डी थ्रोन बिकॉज़ ही ओवरकेम
कुलिसिल क्राष्ट्रिपत्रिका ओकटो अध्यायमलो आयन जय इन्छुनट्नाडु कबटी आयन सिमहास्यमुनु आयन स्वतंत्रिंचुकुन्नाडु अन्यटिटि माटल्ला कन मन चुस्ताम
सो इफ वी आर ओवरकमर्स
मनमु जय इन्छु वारिगा उन्नट्लाइथे
वी कैन अलसो इन्हरिट ऑल थिंग
मनमु गुड़ा समस्तमुनु स्वतंत्रिंचुको गलम
व्हाट इस दिस ऑल थिंग्स वी विल सी लेटर
अन्निटिनी अन्यटिटि माटा दन एक अर्थमींटि
बट इन्हरिट वी अंडरस्टैंड
स्वतंत्रिंचुकुन्नाम अनि माटा मनक अर्थम होतुन्दी
यू विल इन्हरिट व्हाट योर फादर हैस
मी तन्री ए आस्तिनी कलिगुन्नाडु दानिनी मेरु स्वतंत्रिंचुकुन्नाडु
यू विल इन्हरिट व्हाट योर मोदर हैस
लेपुते मी तल्ली ए आस्तिनी कलिगुंदो दानिनी मेरु स्वतंत्रिंचुकुन्नाडु
सो गॉड इस अवर फादर देवुडु मन तन्री वी आर हिस चिल्ड्रन मनमु आयन पिललम एंड डी सेकंड पार्ट ऑफ़ डेट वेरी सेम वर्स अलसो साइज यू शाल बी माई सन्स
अधिकार एड़ो वचनम यक्का रेंडो बागमलो मेरु नाकु मारुलायुंदुरान अंतनाडु
एंड वी नो फ्रॉम जॉन चैप्टर 1 एंड वर्स 12 डेट इफ वी इफ वी एक्सेप्ट डी लॉड ईससु क्रिस्ट इफ वी रिसीव हीम इफ वी पुट अवर फाइट इन हीम ही आस गिवन अस डी अथॉरिटी तू बिकम इस चिल्ड्रन
योहान्सु वातोकटो अध्याय 22 वचनलो मनमु ईसु कृष्ट प्रभावमुन्न विश्वास्मुच्चनपुडु मनमु आयन अंगीकरिंचनपुडु गायकुन्ननपुडु देवनुकु मारुलगा उन्डको आयन मनक अधिकारम इच्छडनटिटि विषयनी गुड़ा मनमु एरिगिन वारविंटु नाम
Now, when I was going through this word, overcomer
जयिंचुटा अन्येट्री टिटी इमाट जयिंचुवाडने माटने गमनिस्ताव्न्डट्री समयम्यलो
Ah, I found it is in singular, he that overcometh.
इदि एक्का वचनम
He that overcometh, that means a person has to overcome.
इवचनम्यने गमनिंचनप्पडु नेनु गमनिंचिन विषयम्य इंटिटी इमाट एक्का वचनम्यलो उन्नु अनगा योराइते जयिस्तारु लेकपते जयिंचुवाडु अनी एक्का वचनम्यलो गमनिस्ताम
But why I said this, it is in singular
इवचनम्य एन्तको एक्का वचनम्यलो उन्नदी अन्ना विषयनी तेलिजस्नानंते
Collectively also as a church, we are going to inherit many things.
सामूहिकंगा संगम्गा गुड़ा मनमो अनेक विषयालुनु मनमो स्वतंत्रिंचुकुनाइंतुनाम
Ah, the church of God is a, is a collective body, collective, that is there are many members in the body.
देवन्यक्का संगमो इदि सामूहिकमयनेट्री देहमो इंदलो अनेकमयनेट्री वेत्तुलु तुनारिंदलो
So, this body is going to become the bride of the Lord Jesus Christ, who is the bride group.
इयोक्का शरीरमो इदि एसु कृष्ण प्रवार्यक्का पिल्ली कुमार्त्तगा उन्ननयुन्नदी एसु प्रवारु पिल्ली कुमार्डा इंतुनाड
So, the status which we are going to get as bride of Lord Jesus Christ is collective, I will say.
किनका एसु कृष्ण प्रवार्यक्का पिल्ली भारिगा मनमो वितन्निटिनी स्वतंत्रिंचुकुन्ताम इदि मनायक्का स्ताई
You understand what I am trying to say?
नेन एन चप्पल अनुकुतुनानु मेरु ग्रैस्टुनार अनुकुतुनान
But he, as far as overcoming is concerned
जयिंचुवाडु विषयम्यक्को वचनप्पडु
It is singular.
इकड़ा ओके एक्का वचनम्यलो उन्नु इमाट
He that overcometh. जयिंचुवाडु You find that verse, he that overcometh, again and again and again and again.
पदेपदे जयिंचुवारु जयिंचुवाडु जयिंचुवाडनेट्री माटनो मनमो बाइबुलो मन चुस्ताम
For example, in Revelation chapter two and three, we find the letter which God has sent through seven churches.
प्रक्त नगरंदमो रेंडो अध्यायम मुड़ो अध्यायमलो प्रभु एडु संगालको आयन इच्छिनट्री इउतरमुन उतराल्लो मनमो इमाटन गमनिस्ताम
He is writing the letter to a church.
प्रभु इउतरमुनो ओक्का संगानिकी आयन रास्ताव्नाड
Whether in Ephesus or Pergamas or whatever.
एफएसए गानी पर्गमो गानी इनका वेरे इतरा संगाललु देशिंची
But there also you find, he that overcometh.
अक्कड़ गुड़ा अनेक परियालम चुस्ताम जयिंचुवानिकी जयिंचुवानिकी अनी
Now, I want to put a challenge on you and I also take it as a challenge.
नेनु मीको ओक्का सवाल वेस्ताव्नानु नेनु गुड़ा इद्यक्का सवाल नेन्तीस्कुन्ना नाकुरकु
That we should have a desire and we should pray that I should inherit all things.
मनमो इप्रार्थिनकेलिगु नेनु समस्तमुनो स्वतंत्रिंचुकोवाली अन्येट्री प्रार्थना कोरिका मन केलिन्ना वार्मा उन्डाली
Lord, I should inherit all things.
प्रवाह नेनु समस्तमुनो स्वतंत्रिंचुकोवाली
But I should become an overcomer, definitely I can inherit all things.
दानिकी नेनु जयिंचुवाडगा उन्डाली अप्पडे वितन्निटिनी नेनु स्वतंत्रिंचुको गलुनु
Ah, so here is a great thing, the greatest of all things is offered by God to us.
गमनिंचन्डी एन्तो गोप्पा विषयमो देवडु मनकु अनुग्रैस्ताव्नाडु मनमो मुंदुच्छुनाड
God says, "All what I have is yours."
देवड्यातुनाडु नाकुन्नदंत गुड़ा नीदे इदिगो तीस्को
Ah, suppose somebody says, "Come, I will give you one crore rupees."
रण्डी नाकु नेनु मीको ओक्का कोटी रुपयलिस्ताने नी ओरे नान्नार
Oh, you come, I will give you.
मेरो चेस्सी चालु नेनु मीकी चेस्सनानंते
Ah, then everybody would like to go and get it.
अंदर वेल्तारु आई तीस्कोडा निकी
Then he will say, he will ask some questions.
अप्पडा इनंतडु नेनु मीको ओक्का प्रश्न अडुतानु
If you answer, I will give.
इप्रश्नक मेर जवाब इस्ते नेनु मीको इकोटीरुपयलिस्ता
All these are going on in the world, you know.
इमेन्नी गुड़ा इत्वंती आ विषयालु लोकम्यल जरुताव्नाय
But in the same way, the Lord is not just offering one crore or thousand crores or a billion crore, he gives everything to us.
प्रभु मनकु ओक्का कोटी रुपयलो लेदु वैकोटल्ल कादु लेपते कोटल्ल कोटल्ल कादुगानी आयन समस्तमुनो आयन मनकु वारस्तुम्यल वालनिस्तपर्ताव्नाड
So, this three days morning sessions
इमुड़ दिनम्यलो ओक्का उदेकालपु बागम्यलो
I am going to discuss one about overcomers
मनमो ध्यानिंचे विषयम्य इंटिटी ओकटी जयिंचुवारु विषयमो
And secondly, I want to discuss about rewards.
रेंडो दी भुमानम्यलु गुरिंची मनमो ध्यानिस्ताम
Or what, what is all these all things?
किनका इस समस्तमु अन्नप्पडु अंदल एमुन्नाय समस्तमंते
Or what is that God is going to give to us?
लेपते देवडु मनकु एमी स्वास्थ्यम्यगा वालनी इष्टपर्ताव्नाड
So, what we are going to discuss in the beginning is
मनमो आरोम्यलो ध्यानिंचे विषयम्य इंटिटी
What is overcoming?
जयिंचुटा अंत्याग्निती
Ah, who is an overcomer?
जयिंचुवार योरु
How can we or I, how can I become an overcomer?
नेनु ओक्का जयिंचुवानिका एलागु कागलनु
When and what should I overcome?
नेनु एप्पुर जयिंचाली देनिनी जयिंचाली
Ah, that we have to see.
अवी इवी मनमो ध्यानिंचाली
First of all, let us have an idea of the word, the meaning of the word, overcomer.
जयिंचुवाडु अन्येट्री टिटी इमाटक्का अर्थान्नी मनमो मुंदु ग्रैंचिन्ना निप्रायतेद्नाम
In the world
लोकम्यलो
I, I don't know, you have heard about wrestling, wrestling.
इकुस्ती पट्टडमो इपोटी गुरिंची मन अंदरकी तेलसु
Ah, you know, this wrestling is an international game, you know that.
इकुस्ती पोटलु अभी अंतरजातीय पोटलु क्रीडल, क्रीडलगा उन्तुनाय
And there are very specific rules.
दनकी निर्दिष्टमयनेट्री अयक्का नियमालु तुनाय
And you know, it is conducted internationally and there are some people you might be knowing their names also, they are very good in wrestling.
मनकु इपोटीलो अंतरजातीयंगा जरुताव्न्डनाय कुंदरु गोप्पा इकुस्ती वीरलु मावल पेलुगुड़ा मन तेलस्डो वचु
Ah, you know, there will be two people in the ring.
इयक क्रीडा प्रांगनम्यलो अरिंगलो इद्दरु व्यक्तुलु तारु
It is a little, little dangerous game also.
अंत्याग्निकुन्ना इदिको चुप रमादकरमयनेट्री आठगुड़ा
Because they hit each other.
ओकरुन ओकरु कोटकु गुद्दुकुन्तारु
And then sometimes you get hurt.
कुंदरु सालु गायालु गुड़ा गावचु
But at the end of the game
इपोटी ओक्का चिवरलो मुगिम्पलो
One overcomes the others.
ओकरु ओकरुनी जयिंचिवेस्तार
That is, that man is surrendered.
इनका ओडीपयनेट्री व्यक्तिनका नाव अतदुकी लुंगिपवाल्सिंदे
And this man overcomes that man.
इगल्पुपन्न वाडु अतन्नी जयिस्ता डु
So, in other words, there are two enemies.
अनगा इद्दरु व्यक्तुलु शत्रुल्गा उन्तुनारु
They are fighting each other.
ओकरु ओकरु पोराडुन्नारु
Under some rules in public and also there will be a monitor or an umpire who will be controlling.
अत्याग्निक इंक्वाट्रुप्पा पोटलोकुनी नियमालु ताई अंत्याग्निकुन्ना ओक्का व्यक्ति उन्नट्लु रेफ्रीगा वारिद्दर्नी नियमालनु पाठिंचिन्तुल्ला चुस्ताडु
And they also develop their body and develop the skill of overcoming.
अत्याग्निकुन्ना इकुस्ती पट्टुवारु वीरु तम शरीरालुनु आलागुना अमर्चुकुन्तारु आलागु बलम्तेचुकुन्तारु तरवता आलागु पोराडतर
I am referring this just for us to get an idea, what is overcoming.
जयिंचुटा अंते अर्थमेंटो दन्नी ग्रैंचिन्ना निकोरकै इविषयाल जप्तनान
Also, we find some verses in the word of God.
देवनु वाक्यम्यलोकुनी वचनाल्लु गुड़ा मनमो चुस्ताम
One word is conqueror.
ओक्का वे, ओक्का वे माट इंटिटी जयिंचुवाडु गल्पुपन्दुवाडु वीरु
We are more than conquerors.
मनमो अत्यधिकमयनेट्री जयमुनु पन्दिन्ना वार्मो अनुन्डी
Okay, let me turn with me to Romans chapter eight.
रोमा इन्विद अध्यायम दायचेस्ती एनंडी
Where there we find verse thirty-seven, we are more than, in all these things, we are more than conquerors through him that loved us.
मुप्पाय एड़ो वचनल्लो आयननु मनलनु प्रेमिंचनवानी द्वारा मनमो वितन्निटिलो अत्यधिक विजयमु पन्दुचुन्नाम
Ah, he is talking about Vijayam.
विजयमु गुरिंची इक्का रास्तनाडु विजयम
Another reference is second Corinthians chapter two and verse fourteen.
कुरिंत्लक्रश्ना रेंडो पत्रिका रेंडो अध्यायम पद्नाल्लो इनकोकु माटुन्डी
Thanks be unto God, which giveth, always calls us to triumph in Christ, the word used is triumph in Christ.
आयनयंदु मम्मुनो एल्लप्पडु विजयोत्साहुमुतो ऊरेगिंचन्ना देवनुकी स्तोत्रमो
Ah, same word, Vijayam and Ulshavam.
विजयोत्साहुमो
Then another verse, verse Corinthians chapter fifteen and verse fifty-seven.
मोदित कुरिंति पदिहन अध्यायमो याबाय एड़ो वचनमण्डी मोदित कुरिंति पदिहनु याबेड
Ah, thanks be to God, which giveth us victory through our Lord Jesus Christ.
आयननु मन प्रवेणी एसु कृष्ण तुमोलम्यगा मनकु जयमु अनुग्रेंचन्ना देवनुकी स्तोत्रमु कलुगुनु गाका
The all these three verses
इमुड़ वचनाल्लो गुड़ा
More or less the same idea is there.
ओकिटे बावमो अक्कड़ उन्नदी
I wouldn't like to go very much deep into it.
वितलुनिकी लोथ्का वेलदानिकी नाकुष्टिलेदु
But in Romans chapter thirty-seven, which we have just read
रोमा इन्विदी मुप्पाय एड़ो वचनमुनो इन्दा किन्ना मन चदुकुन्नाम
There the problem is one of, one of suffering.
अक्कड़ ओक्का समस्येंटे, समस्येंटे श्रमल्ला गुरिंचुन्नदी
There we see the verses above that and verses below that, that is after thirty-eight, thirty-nine.
मुप्पाय आरु तरवता मुप्पाय एन्विदी मुप्पाय तमिदी अनगा इवचनमुनको पाइना किन्द वचनाल्लो मन गमनिस्ते
There you will find it is, it is the persecution or problem which they face in their life.
अत्याग्निक विश्वासलु तम चियुतमलु वार इदरुकुने श्रमलु हिम्सल्लु गुरिंची इकड़ा तेलिजयीबर्ताव्न्डी
Ah, verse thirty-five.
मुप्पाय एड़ो वचन गमनिंचन्डी
The challenge is, who shall separate us from the love of Christ?
कृष्ण तु प्रेमनुण्डी मनलनु एड़बापु वाडेवडु
Ah, then he gives a big list.
ततरोतक पेद्दा पट्टिका इस्ताव्नाडु पावलु
Verse thirty-five
मुप्पाय एड़ो वचनल्लो
Tribulation
श्रमायननु
Distress
बादायननु
Persecution
हिम्सायननु
Famine
करुवायननु
Naked
वस्त्रहीनतायननु
Peril
उपद्रवमयननु
Or sword
कट्गमयननु
Ah, we are killed all day long, verse thirty-six.
मुप्पाय आरो वचनल्लो दिनमेल्ला मेमो वधिंप्पा बढ्युन्नाम
We are accounted as sheep for the slaughter.
वधको सिद्धमयनेट्री गोरे, गोरे लवनी एंच्चा बढ्युन्नाम
And verse thirty-seven, he says
मुप्पाय एड़ो वचनलंतडु
In all these things, we are more than conquerors.
आयननु मनलनु प्रेमिंचनवानी द्वारा मनमो वितन्निटिलो अत्यधिक विजयमु पन्दुचुन्नाम
Ah, then he says
तरवत अंतडु
Verse thirty-eight
मुप्पाय एन्विद वचन
For I am persuaded that death, nor life, angels, or principalities, or powers, or things present, or things to come, then nor height depth nor any other creature shall be able to separate us from the love of god which is in christ jesus
मूप्पै एड़ा मूप्पै एनविदी मूप्पै तमिद वचनालो मरणमायनो जीवमायनो देवदुतलायनो प्रदानुलायनो उन्नवायनो राबोयनो अधिकारलायनो एत्तायनो लोतायनो सुष्टिंपा बढिना मरी एदयनो मन प्रवेश न कृष्ट यसु नंदली देवनी प्रेमनुंडी मनलो एडबाप नेरदनी रूडिगा नम्मुचुन्नानो अनंत नाट पाउलु
ah if we are separated from the love of christ
कृष्टु प्रेमनुंडी ओकावेला मनमो एडबाप चेबट्नट्लाइते
that means we are not an overcomer
अनगा दाने अर्थमींटे मनमो जयिंचन वारम कामो
and many people are put to persecution
अनेकुलो स्रमलो गुंडा वेल्थ अउन्नार
very very difficult situation
एन्तो कष्टमायन ट्रिटिक कृष्टमायन ट्रिटिक परिस्थितलो
ah there are many stories of persecution right in india
मन भारतदेशमलोने अनेकुलो स्रमलो गुंडा वेलिनी
I don't know whether you have heard about this what I am I am going to say whether you have heard I don't know it has been going viral in the in the media christian media
क्राइस्टवा इमीडिया लो ने चेप्पे इमाट इविषयमो चाला वायरल आईपीन्दा अनेकुलो दिन कुरिंची चूस्ताउनारो विंटा अउन्नार
in up there is a mission hospital in phattipur
उत्तरप्रदेशलो फत्तेपूर अनित्यतिति स्थलमलो ओका क्राइस्टवा मिशन हॉस्पिटलुंडी वैद्यशाला
and the government has been behind this hospital
अति प्रभुत्तोमो इहास्पिटल मिदा दृष्टिकलिंदी
the pressure is given to the the chief or the chief medical superintendent and he was harassed
अति प्रभुत्तो वारो इह मेडिकल अधिकार मिदा अक्रा हॉस्पिटल के अधिकार गुन्नट्रिटी अव्यक्त मिदा दृष्टिंची अतिने एन्तकानो वेदिस्ताउनार
he was asked to sign a paper
ओका पेपर मिदा संतकन चेमनार
what is written there is all false
इका अकड़े मैते रायबडुन्दो अदन्त गुड़ा अबद्दमे
police says come on sign it
पोलिस वार अंटाडु इदिवो इकन्नो संतकम पेटाल्सिन्दे
and they were harassing his wife
आइन बारियनो वेदिस्ताउनार
you tell your husband to better sign otherwise you will be arrested
गमिनिचेंडी मी बर्तक जप्पनी संतकन चेमनी लेपोते मेमो वेदिस्ताम बाधपेट्ता
and the wife was kept under sort of house arrest that means she cannot go out
इंटी इंटिलोने अमनो बंदिंचु उंचार
ah but he he says no I will not sign I am a christian what a false statement I will not sign let come what may
डॉक्टर नंटाडु इदि इदन्त गुड़ा अबद्दप्पु माटलो कबट्टी नैन क्राइस्टोनी नैन वीत मिदा नैनो संतकन चेयनो एदयना नैन एदरकुन्टान अंडन
you know what they wanted to do was
वारो इह पोलिस वारो गप प्रभुत्तो वारो चेयालनकुने दितर्टे
that you have forcibly converted some people to christianity
मीरो बलवंतंगा कुंदरिके मतमार्पीडी चेसारो अनी वारो निंदा वेल्थ अउन्नार
you see it is like this
इदि इलागुन्दी
you know these people these brethren out of the love of lord jesus christ
इह सहोदरलो हास्पिटल लोनट्रिटी वारो कृष्ट यसु प्रभु एक प्रेमनु बट्टी
in areas where there is no medical facilities
एकड़ाएते वैद्य सदुपायल लेवो
they go and start small hospitals and do very wonderful service
वारो एक चिन्न चिन्न वैद्यशाललो तेरिची अद्भुतमायन ट्रिटिक वैद्य सेवल अंदिस्तर
all the people around are very poor
चुट्टुनट्रिटी प्रजल अंदरुड़ा पेदवारो
many people become sick
अनेकुलो रोगालोकु गुराव्तार
they don't have money to go to hospital which is very far
दूरमलोनट्रिटी वाहास्पिटल वैद्यशालक वेलदानिके वारीके डब्बु दो
even if you go you don't get good service
अकड़ी वेलिना अकड़ी मंचेस वैद्यम अंदुदु
ah and many people die because they are not getting the medical facility
सरियनट्रिटी वैद्य सदुपायल लेनिकारण बट्टी अनेकुलो चनिपोत अउन्नार
and then the love and compassion of the lord jesus christ
अति कृष्ट यसु प्रभु एक प्रेमनु बट्टी जालिनी बट्टी
ah convalesced them to leave their lucrative practice outside in the world in the cities to go to these villages and serve them
अति इह वैद्य सिबंदी वारो पट्टनालोनट्रिटी चक्कटी उद्योगालो चक्कटी चुकवंतमायन ट्रिटिक जीवितानी वधिली इह पॉलिटुरलो मार्मुलो प्रांतलो निके वेली सेवचेडनिके वारो तमुताम अप्पकिंचुकुनार
and though so they they serve these poor people for nothing that is they don't get any money because they can't afford but they give quality service
अति मीरो एन्तो नान्यमायन ट्रिटिक सेवचेस्थारगानी इह प्रजल पेदवार्गा बट्टी वारो विरके डब्बु वरो विरके लाभम दरको दान बट्टी
then they also will start thinking why these people are doing this
अति वैद्यम पोंदु वारुड़ा अल्लोचिस्तार इह प्रजल इंदुकी ट्रिटिक सेवचेस्तुनारो अनी
they come and ask the nurses why why you are serving us why you are doing like this
नर्सल नंटाडु तरमा मेरी इंदुकी इन्तस सेवचेस्तुनारो इह परिचरिया अंत गुड़ा इंदुक जेस्तुनार अंडुतर
they come and ask the doctors why you are sacrificing like this if you go to city you can make lot of money
डॉक्टर नंटाडु तर आया मेरो ची इह सेव इंदुक जेस्तुनार इह परिचरिया इंदुक जेस्तुनार मेर पट्टनालोल्टो मंच डब्बु संपादिंचुकु दान्तर
then they get the opportunity to share the gospel
अट्वंटिस्समयालो सुवार्ता अंदिच्चिरानिके विरका अवकाश
we are doing it not for us but for our lord jesus christ who came to the world to live for us and to die for us and he served all his life and he has asked us to show love and compassion to those who are poor
अति इदि माकुरुमें चेट्लिद गानी मा प्रभु परलोकमुनिति लोकमुनु कोची प्राणम नर्पिंची आइन सेवचेस्डु इह सेवा पेदवालोच चेमनी आइन माक आज्ञा पिंचरनी आमाटन बट्टी वार आलागु वारीकु त्रिप्स्तार
so there will be prayer in the hospital
आलागुना इह हास्पिटललो प्रार्थना
there will be preaching of the word in the hospital
देवन वाक्यमयोक्का उपदेशमुन्तुन्दी हास्पिटललो
so some people accept
कुंदरो दाने बट्टी कुंदरो सुवार्तनो नम्मुतारो विश्वसिस्तार
but the government wants to prove that we are forcing them
अति प्रभुत्तोमो वीरनी मतमार्पीडी बलवंतंगा मतमार्पीडी चेस्तुनारनी वारु नेपम वेस्तार
you know when persecution comes like comes like this
इलागुना इह हिम्सलो वेदनलानीवी वच्छनपुडु
oh there may be some people who will give away
अति कुंदरो दानी तटुकोलेका वारो विश्वासन वधुल्कुंटार
that is what is written here
अति आविष्यनी इकड़ा वारो पाउलु रास्ताउनार
ah apostle says
अपोसल अंटनाडु
all these things we are more than conquerors through him that loved us
अति विटन्नीटलो मम्मलो प्रेमिंचन वाणित्त द्वारा मनमो अत्यधिक विजयम पोंदचुन्नामो
so we are not able to get victory because of the persecution but here it says we are more than conquerors maybe we will die or we maybe we will be we will suffer
अति इह स्रमलो बट्टी मनमो जयिंचलेकुपुतन अनकनी इकड़े मैम रायबुदंटे मनमो प्राणम अन्ना पोवचु लेपोते अधिकमायन ट्रिटिक स्रमलो गुंडनानाना मनमो वेलावचु
now in second corinthian chapter two and verse fourteen
कोरिंथल क्रासन रेंडो पत्रिका रेंडो अध्यम पत्नालो वचनलो
we find another situation
इकड़ा इन्कोका परिस्थिति मन चुस्तंतुनार
and the situation here is slightly different from what we read earlier
अति इन्तु पोंदचु चदुकुनट्रिटी परिस्थितिके तो इकड़ुनट्रिटी परिस्थिति बिन्नंगा उन्दी
ah here we find
इकड़ा मनका विषयमेंटिटे
you read verse chapter two second corinthian chapter two verse fourteen to seventeen
रेंडो कोरिंथल क्रासन कोरिंथल क्रासन रेंडो पत्रिका रेंडो अध्यम पत्नालो नुंडी पतिहेड़ वरु कमार्च मार्च अदमंडी दैचिस बिगरक चद्वंडी पत्नालो नुंडी पतिहेड़ वरु कमार्च मार्च मा द्वारा प्रतिस्थलमनंदो कृष्टुनु गुर्चिना ज्ञानमो एक्का सुवासनुनु कनपर्चु आइन एंदु मम्मुनो एल्लपुडु विज्योत्साहमतो उरेकिंचन देवनिके स्तोत्रमो रक्षिंचु बडु वारो पट्ला नशिंचु वारी पट्लनो मेमु देवनी इनिकृष्ट सुवासन इन्नाम नशिंचु वारीके मरणार्थमायनो मरणपु वासनगा नो रक्षिंपा बडु वारीके जीवार्थमायन जीवपु वासनगा उन्नामो कावना इटि संगतलुनो चालिन्न वाडुडु मेमु देवनी वाक्यमुनु कलिपि चेरपे वार अनेकुले एंदका निष्कपटिंगल वार्मुनो देवनी वालना नीमिपु बढिना वार्मैंडी कृष्ट नंदु देवनी एदिता बोधिंचुन्नामो
so here the situation is
इकड़ुन्ना परिस्थिति एंटंटे
ah there are two things
रेंडु विषयालुंडनाई
one is we are unto god a sweet saver of christ
मेमैते देवनिके कृष्ट सुवासन इन्नामो
that means we do things which goes as sweet saver unto the lord
मेमु चेसेट्रिटी पनलो देवनी सन्निदिलो निके इम्पाइन ट्रिटिक परिमलस सुवासनगा वेल्थ अउन्दी
you know the same saver that is the same good works
अनगा एदिते इह एक मंच सत्क्रियलुंडनायो
ah it works in two ways to two different people
रेंडु मनुष्यलको रेंडु रक्कालो मनुष्यलकु बिन्नंगा रेंडु रीतल्लो पन्चेस्ताउन्दी
it is sweet saver first part we are unto god a sweet saver of christ in them that are saved that is one
रक्षिपा बडु वारी पट्ला
yes
अदि देवनिके कृष्ट सुवासन इन्नाम
ah suvasana
सुवासन
so the same vasana is suvasana to them that are saved
रक्षण पोंदिनट्रिटी वारीके इदि सुवासनगा उन्दी
now you read further the same verse
अदि वचनानी मन चुस्नट्लाइते
and in them that perish to the one we are saver of death
अति नशिंचु वारीके मरणार्थमायन ट्रिटिक मरण वासनगा उन्नाम
and to other the saver of life unto life
रक्षिपा बडु वारीके जीवार्थमायन जीवपु वासनगा उन्नामो
ah so we have to be sweet saver unto the lord
मनमो देवनिके इम्पाइन ट्रिटिक सुवासनगा मनमो उन्डाली
ah and he says
इकड़ा अंटनाडु
you when we are when we are a sweet saver unto the lord
मन प्रभुको सुवासनगा मनमो नपुडु
and we are able to triumph in christ
अपुडु मनमो कृष्ट यसु नंदु विजयोत्साहमतो उन्तामो
ah that is one situation
अदि ओका परिस्थिति
hope you have understood
मीरो इविष्यनी अर्थन चेस्कुनारनी
then we find another situation
इन्कोका परिस्थिति गुड़ा कुरिंचिस्ताम
he says
आइन अंटाडु
there are many who corrupt the word of god
अनेकुलो देवनी वाक्यमुनु वारो चेरपुत अउन्नारो
ah but we don't do that
अति मेमु आलागु चेय वारीमी कामो
ah that in my kjb bible which i am having
नदकुरिंत्रिटी किंग जेम्स वाइस बाइबिललो
ah there is written that we are trading with or making merchandise of the word of god
देवन वाक्यमुनु मेम व्यापारमु चेसे अर्ट्रिटु वार अबत्नाम
there are many people who do that
अनेकुलो इलागुना देवन वाक्यमुनु तो व्यापारंजेसी डब्बुनो संपादिच्छु
it is not talking about you know we are we are giving bible selling bible for two hundred rupees that is not the thing
गमिनिचेंडी एदो बाइबिललोनो रेंडो वंदर रुपालो अम्मुत्तुनाम अंट्रिटी विषय कादिदी
but they are making the gospel and the teaching of the lord jesus christ a way of making money
अति मीरो सुवार्तनु प्रकटिंच्छता यसु कृष्ट प्रभु वारीके माटलोनो वारो आलागु सेलवेचु द्वारा डब्बुनो संपादिंचु वारीका वार उन्नार
ah apostle paul talks about them
अपोसन पाउलु अट्टुन वार कुरिंची माटलार्त अउन्नार
he said their god is their belly
वार आइन अंटनार वार कडुपे वारी देवडु
then he says we are not like them
मेमु आलाट्टु वारम कामो
we do not we do not sell jesus christ
मेमु यसु प्रभुनो अम्मु वार्मी कामो
ah what is that selling lord jesus christ or making vya param what is that
यसु प्रभुनो अम्मुत्तमो लेपोते व्यापारम चेयनमो अंटा अर्थमींटे
oh they will preach like this
वारो इलागु बोध जेस्तार
oh come to lord jesus christ
मीरो यसु प्रभु दकरकी रण्डी
they will also say come to me
फाल अंटाडु नदकुर कुड़ा रण्डी
ah I will pray for you
नैन मीको रुप्रार्थन चेस्तार
lord will bless you
देवडु मेमो आशीर्वाद
lord will give you good husbands
मीको देवडु मंच वार्तन चेस्तार देवडु मीको मंच वारी
lord will give you first rank in your college
मीको कॉलेजलो मीको मोदटी
they will give you lot of money
इका गोप्पा डब्बु संपादिस्ता
you will get lottery ticket
मीको लॉटरी टिकट गुड़ अस्त्र
that is that it is known as it is a doctrine which is wrong ah that is the doctrine of ah flourishing that is blessing
इदि आशीर्वादपु सुवार्ता इदि इदि वेरे रखपु माटलो
you know what is the truth in the word of god
देवन वाक्यमुनु नट्रिटी सत्यमेंटंटे
it is very clear
इदि एन्तो सरलंगा स्पष्टंगा उन्दी
lord ever said come to me and everything will be alright in your life
प्रभु इकड़ुगुड़ा मी नदकुर कोस्ते मी जियुतमलो अन्नी साफिक सागिपोत एने एकड़ा
I will say you pray for a car I will give you
मीरो कार कोरकाडिकंडी नैन मी कार इस्तनन प्रभु इकड़ा आला माटी
but he said seeking for the kingdom of god and his righteousness
अति यसु प्रभु वारीमनारो मोदटा ना राज्यमुनु नीतिनी मोदट वेतकुड़ियान अंडनाडु
and then ah all these things should be added
अपुडु वन्नी गुड़ा मीको अनुग्रहिंपा बढुनो अनी प्रभु अंडनाडु
he is seeking for the things of the world what shall I eat what shall I drink all these things the heathens search
अति नैन एम तिन्दुना एम इत्रागुदुना अनित्रिटी इह माटलो इह चिन्तंत गुड़ा इदि लोकस्तुलो चिन्तिंचेट्रिटी विषयालिवी
ah what is important is the kingdom of god
एदि प्रामुख्यमो अंटे देवनी राज्यम प्रामुख्यमो
and the righteousness of the kingdom of god is important
देवनी राज्यम लोनट्रिटी अन्नीति प्रामुख्यमैं
and then he said
तरवत आइन अंडनाडु
all these things should be
अपुडु वन्नी गुड़ा नैन मीको अनुग्रहिस्तानो
no I used to look at the families in our assembly
मा संगमलो नट्रिटी कुटुमालन चुस्तंतुनारनी
ah you know we we see them in our own families
मा सोत कुटुमालने चुस्ताम
we had one party that is grandmother grandfather
मा ताता ताता अम्ममलो आलागुनारो
they didn't have all the good things which we are having
मेमु कलिगुनट्रिटी मंच विषयालु वस्तुलो वारी लेवो
but they were very rich in god
अति देवनलो वार आयश्वर वंतलायु उन्दिनार
ah they were rich in prayer
प्रार्थनालो आयश्वर वंतलायु
they were rich in faith
विश्वासमलो आयश्वर वंतलो
they were rich in suffering for the lord
कृष्टु प्रभुकोरके स्रमलो सायिंचिव्युलो
they were rich in preaching the gospel
सुवार्त प्रकटिंचिव्युलो आयश्वर वंतलो
they were very rich spiritually
वार आत्मेंगा एन्तो दनवंतलो
ah god gave them maybe annem for the day and they somehow lived
अति देवडु आरोचु कावल्सना आहारम वारीकिचारो कावल्सना कनीसमायन ट्रिटिक वस्तुलो विषयालु देवडु वारीकिचार
they didn't have all that rich clothes which we have
मेमु कलिगुनट्रिटी मंच दुस्तुलो तरवत तरवत सौक्यमो सुकंग वारीके लेदु
but they sought the kingdom of god there are so many ah grandmothers and grandfathers even in our own families
अति वारो देवनी राज्यमुनु वेतकेरो आलागुना मा कुटुमालो अनेकमंदी तातलो अम्ममलो नानमलो वारो इलागुना देवनी राज्यमुनु वेतकिन वार
but look at their children
अति वारी पिललुंचुनंडी
they are all blessed
वार अंदरो आशीर्वाद दिम्पा बढ्डार
in their family
वारी कुटुमालो
in their profession
वारी उद्योगालो
and in having in other areas
वेरे वेरे विषयालु
they were blessed
वारो आशीर्वाद दिंच्छु बढ्डार
now you look at their next generation
तरवत तरान्ने चुनंडी
oh they have gone very high
वार इका एत्तुगै एद्गेर
many of them have gone to america or england or australia or they are getting very high jobs here in india
अति चाला मंदी अमेरिका इंग्लैंड ऑस्ट्रेलिया के लेरु तरवत भारतदेशमलो पेदपेद उद्योगालो वारीको चाय
goddess blessed
देवडु आशीर्वाद दिंच्छड
so that is our history but brother baxing or his coworkers never said oh your children will be busy your grandpa children will go to america come to the church no
सर बासिंग एपुडु गुड़ा मीरो मंदिरानी करंडी मी पिलल आशीर्वाद दिस्तार आशीर्वाद दिंच्छु बढ़तार मी पिलल अमेरिका गुल्तार इलागु देव मीरो दनवंतलो तरनी एपुड चेप्पले दु
in our side
एपुड चेप्पले दालागु
is a repent your restaurant
आइन वास्तवनिकानी चेप्पन माटिन मी नु पापीवी नु पश्चाता पडु मार्मुन्सु पोंदन चेप्पे
heel down and read your bible
नु मोकरिंची नी वाक्य
live according to what is written there Live according to what is written there.
No, he is not going to do anything.
That is what he was preaching.
He is not going to do anything.
Now, I am talking about those who corrupt the word of God. Those who are making merchandise of the word of God. They can never do it.
They have not done anything. They have not done anything.
Ah, that is the context in which this is written.
At the time of the war, this statement was read.
Ah, and he says.
Here, Paul is saying.
Oh, we are, we triumph in Christ.
We are in Christ.
Or in other words, I did not do such thing.
At the same time, I did not do such things.
Ah, we were with, we were sincere.
We are not understanding.
We, but as of sincerity, but as of God, in the sight of God's speak, we in Christ, verse seventy.
When we were going to do something, we were not going to do anything. We were not going to do anything. We were not going to do anything.
Or in other words.
What else can I say?
In Romans chapter eight, the challenge is poverty or persecution.
In Romans, when they were going to do something, they were going to do something.
Ah, these are the things pull us down, put us down.
These things are going to happen to you.
That we are not, not able to be overcomers.
What is going to happen is going to happen.
Many people, many people have to compromise in their life.
When they were going to do something, they were going to do something.
Ah, I don't know whether you know the story of these Islam countries. For example, Turkey.
Turkey, when Muslims were going to do something, they did not tell us.
I don't know whether I should speak about it.
What is going to happen?
But with great sorrow, I say.
How much sorrow and pain is this?
You know, if you study the history of Christianity.
Christianity.
In the first few centuries.
In the early days.
You find there were two centers.
Two?
Two centers.
There were two centers.
One was Rome.
A Roman city.
That is after Constantine became a Christian. He was a Roman emperor.
Constantine, an enemy of Rome, changed into a Christian.
And even now, that is the center of Roman Catholics. And the Pope is there.
Now, the city of Christ is there.
But there was another city.
At the time of the war, there was another city.
That is called Constantinople.
The Constantinople.
Ah, that city is even now.
The city of Turkey. In Turkey.
But we are, it is not known as Constantinople, it is known as Istanbul.
At the time, the city of Constantinople is not known, it is Istanbul.
That is, it has, it is, the name is changed.
Then, the name of Islam. The name of the city is changed.
During that time, there was a jihad.
In the time of the war, there was a jihad.
Ah, what they call parashuddha yudham, but jihad.
Parashuddha yudham is a jihad.
Ah, I don't want to call it parashuddha, because there is nothing parashuddha about it.
When parashuddha yudham is not present, there is no parashuddha.
That is what exactly this ISIIS people did.
This ISI, this organization is doing.
Ah, one bishop of a church in Kerala.
In Kerala, a bishop was appointed.
He had gone to Turkey.
He went to Turkey.
And he got the report from the Christians.
When he was in Christ, he was praying.
And you also might have read in newspaper.
You are not going to do anything.
You know, in Turkey, in Iraq, there were lot of Christians.
When it came to Iraq, there were a lot of Christians.
But then this ISIIS people.
This ISIS organization.
Suppose you are a good Christian and you are having a business or a good job and a good house and you are living very comfortably.
When you are in this country, you are going to do something.
They will come with a sword.
They will kill you.
Then they will say.
They will say.
Ah, they will give three or four conditions.
Three or four conditions.
Number one.
A Roman city.
You become, you become, you leave Christianity, you become Islam.
You leave Christianity, you become Islam.
Then you can live here happily.
Now, you are going to live here.
Number one.
This is a Roman city.
Number two.
This is a Roman city.
If you are not accepting Islam.
You are going to die.
Ah, then we will kill you.
You will die.
Otherwise.
You will run away from this place. You will leave this place.
Or.
You will live here. You will live here.
Be a Christian.
You will live here.
But you have to pay what you call gassia, that is called a tax.
When you are going to live here, you will have to pay the tax.
That is, you be substandard citizens of this country.
So, either you die. Or you come in Islam. Or you pay gassia.
Or you run away.
You will die.
And you cannot take anything with you, you can only take what you have. You can carry in your hand. You cannot hire a taxi and go.
When you are going to die, you will not take anything. You will not take anything. You will not take anything.
That is what they are telling.
This is what is going to happen.
What will the Christian do?
In this country, Christ is present.
Some young people can run, older people, what will they do?
When they are old, they will run.
So, some people. They become Islam.
When they become Islam.
That means they have compromised with their faith.
When they have compromised with their faith.
What they were doing, I cannot tell in public, sisters are there, I cannot talk.
When they are going to do something, I did not tell you.
Terrible things.
They are going to do something.
Ah, now, that is persecution.
Now, this is what is happening.
And over the centuries, this is what happened in Iraq, this is what happened in, in all these countries, Turkey and all these countries.
At the time, there were a lot of Islam.
What I am saying is history, that is what has happened.
At the time, this is what is happening.
What I am trying to say.
What is going to happen?
One condition is, you are, you are asked to compromise on your faith in Jesus Christ.
When you are going to do something, you are going to do something.
On another one, you are, you are forced to compromise because of persecution.
What is going to happen? When they are going to do something, they are going to do something.
And another is the temptation to corrupt the word of God. Read half of the truth, leave the rest of the truth.
What is going to happen? When they are going to do something, they are going to do something.
Then the third is.
What is going to happen?
We have read from first Corinthians chapter fifteen.
In Corinthians, the first verse of the book of the Lord.
In verse fifty-seven.
In the verse fifty-seven.
Ah, there we fight thanks be to God which giveth victory through our Lord Jesus Christ.
When you are going to die, you are going to die.
He is talking about death and resurrection.
When you are going to die, you are going to die.
We will be talking about it more in the days to come.
When you are going to die, you will die.
But what does he say? Verse fifty-five.
The verse fifty-five.
Ah, oh death, where is thy sting? Oh grave, where is thy victory?
Oh, my God, you are victorious.
Ah, verse fifty-seven.
The verse fifty-seven.
Thanks be unto God which giveth the victory through our Lord Jesus Christ.
When you are going to die, you are going to die.
That is victory through resurrection.
When you are going to die, you are going to die.
Ah, first Corinthians chapter fifteen is one chapter which talks about resurrection.
In the first verse of the book of the Lord.
Oh, it's a wonderful chapter.
This is the first verse of the book.
So, death claims victory.
When you are going to die, you are going to die.
Hebrews chapter two and verse fourteen and fifteen.
In Hebrews, the verse forty-four.
Somebody read, if you are in Telugu, somebody read loudly.
In Hebrews, the verse forty-four. When they are going to die, they are going to die.
So, there you can go and read, it's a complicated two verses.
This is the second verse.
You know, Satan is threatening every man, you and me also.
When you are going to die, you are going to die.
Ah, now you think you are a believer.
When you are going to die, you are going to die.
And I will take your soul.
When you are going to die, you will die.
So, that is why there is a fear of death in man.
When you are going to die, you are going to die.
Ah, even in believers, some people have got fear of death.
When they are going to die, they are going to die.
That means they did not get victory over it.
When you are going to die, you are going to die.
Oh, a believer, a true believer.
When you are going to die, you are going to die.
He will say with apostle Paul, for me to live is Christ and to die is gain.
When you are going to die, you are going to die.
Ah, he will say, I am not worried about my death.
When you are going to die, you are not going to die.
It cannot put me down, pull me down.
When you are going to die, you are not going to die.
I don't have any fear of death.
When you are going to die, you are not going to die.
If I die, I'll go to Lord.
When you are going to die, you will go to God.
That is better for me. That I don't have any suffering in this world, sickness, problem.
When you are going to die, you will go to God.
Ah, you will say with apostle Paul, I have to be here for the sake of the ministry, for the sake of you people, I have to be here for some more time.
When you are going to die, you are going to die.
Ah, but if God calls me, I am very happy, I will go to him.
When you are going to die, you will go to God.
But the, but the Satan will, will challenge every believer.
When you are going to die, you are going to die.
That is what that fourteen, fifteen says.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Our Roman chapter, I mean, sorry, Hebrews chapter two, verse fourteen and fifteen, which we have read.
When you are going to die, you will die.
All the days, people are threatened by Satan with death.
When they are going to die, they are going to die.
Oh, I will take your life.
When you are going to die, you will die.
And your body will go into the grave.
When you are going to die, you will die.
That is your, that is your end.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Ah, then you will say, Arre, I lived, I had this, that, I have to leave everything, my wife, my children, my family, my church, I enjoyed everything, I will leave.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Ah, then we get fear.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Fear of death.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Ah, so here, resurrection has taken place.
When you are going to die, you will die.
That is Satan tried that with Jesus also.
When you are going to die, you will die.
I will see that you are crucified, you are killed.
When you are going to die, you will die.
You claim to be the son of God, eh?
When you are going to die, you will die.
When you are going to die. What, on the third day?
When you are going to die, you will die.
He was resurrected.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Ah, so that is why apostle says, oh death, where is your victory?
When you are going to die, you will die.
Ah, oh grave, where is your victory?
When you are going to die, you will die.
Ah, death and grave has no victory over us.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Ah, we are, we, we have got victory.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Thanks be to God which giveth us victory through our Lord Jesus Christ.
When you are going to die, you will die.
So, we should get victory.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Now, to whom we should get victory?
When you are going to die, you will die.
What are our enemies?
When you are going to die, you will die.
Now, what are our enemies?
When you are going to die, you will die.
One is devil or Satan.
When you are going to die, you will die.
The other is the world.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Third is flesh or self.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Ah, who are our enemies?
When you are going to die, you will die.
One is Satan.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Then world.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Third.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Flesh.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Actually, shariram is not the correct word, flesh, mansam, is it there in this thing? Anyway, you see, there is a difference between body and flesh. Anyway, we will come to that.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Ah, so these are the three enemies of a Christian.
When you are going to die, you will die.
One enemy is inside us.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Self, flesh, it is inside.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Two enemies are outside us.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Devil and world work together.
When you are going to die, you will die.
They gather together and work with our old man.
When you are going to die, you will die.
That is how the enemies work.
When you are going to die, you will die.
There is a great unity among them.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Ah, these two enemies outside work with the enemy inside.
When you are going to die, you will die.
What is overcoming?
We should be able to overcome Satan. When you are going to die, you will die.
We have to have victory over the world.
When you are going to die, you will die.
And we have to have victory over our flesh.
When you are going to die, you will die.
God has made inappropriate.
When you are going to die, you will die.
If we appropriate it or if we use, make use of it.
When you are going to die, you will die.
You can be an overcomer.
When you are going to die, you will die.
And you can, apostle say, everything, inherit all things.
When you are going to die, you will die.
We find all these three enemies in one verse or two verses.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Kindly turn with me to Colossians chapter two.
In the first verse of the book.
Sorry, Ephesians chapter two.
In the first verse of the book.
Ah, verse two and three, we find three enemies of a Christian all in one verse, one true verse.
When you are going to die, you will die.
First, I will, I will say by reading verse two.
When you are going to die, you will die.
And after that, let brother read in Telugu, then I will explain.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Those who are having English Bible, kindly follow with me.
When you are going to die, you will die. Ephesians, the verse two.
Wherein in time pass you walk according to the course of this world, so world is there.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Ah, secondly, according to the prince of the power of air, who is the prince of the power of the air? Satan.
When you are going to die, you will die. When you are going to die, you will die.
Who is that?
Who is that?
There is Satan.
Satan.
So, we got two enemies here.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Now you come to verse three in English. Among whom also, we all had our conversation in time pass in the lust of the flesh.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Fulfilling the desires of the flesh and of the mind and were by nature children of wrath even as others.
When you are going to die, you will die.
So, these are the three enemies.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Ah, Satan.
When you are going to die.
World.
When you are going to die.
And self.
When you are going to die.
Two enemies are outside, one enemy is inside, a Christian has to overcome these three enemies.
When you are going to die, you will die.
And out of these three enemies.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Many other things will come.
When you are going to die, you will die.
One is sin.
When you are going to die, you will die.
The other is suffering.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Other is death.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Sub, that is diseases.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Famine.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Ah, condemnation.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Many other, many other things are there.
When you are going to die, you will die.
We have to overcome all that.
When you are going to die, you will die.
But if we are able to overcome these three enemies.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Then you will be an overcomer.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Ah, we have to have victory over these enemies.
When you are going to die, you will die.
So, we are going to study this.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Now, we have a short break.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Can somebody find out where the tea is ready? Tea, all, giving to you, right?
Yeah.
Is it ready? Okay, is it ready? Can somebody find out? We, we don't want waste, ready?
It's ready.
Shall we pray?
Please pray.
For short break, come, take some water, wash your face, then have the tea and then come back as early as possible.
When you are going to die, you will die.
Heavenly Father, return God, we thank you and praise you for this study of overcomers. And when we overcome, we inherit all things. What is this all things? Is rewards which God has kept for us. So dear Lord, help us to systematically try to understand from the word of God, whoever are enemies and how, what is the provision which God has made to get victory over these enemies? That it will appear as disease, it may appear as a doctrinal challenge, it may appear as disease, it may appear as death also, but we can have victory, we praise God. Now we break for a short while, enable us to come back and continue to study these deep subjects. We pray in Jesus Christ precious name.
Amen.
Short break.
सांग शिर्सलो पाठसंक्य नालगु सांग नंबर फोर, ओ अब्राहम यिसकु ओ अब्राहम यिसकु ईश्रायेलु देवम नीचनिवासिनिवु प्रचेकिंग कप्पेदल न्याप्कम जेस्कुन्टु प्रतिबरहिनत दूरपर्चमंजेपी मरिप्रभाप, मेमंदरम गोड तंडी, माकाली फ्रदरम, मी वाक्यम तनिपमंजेपी कृतिक्नासुर चेलिस्तो, माप्रादनम, माप्राभुनु, मारक्षकडेने एस्क्रिस्तिवनम रेवेडकुन्सुन्नाम तंडी अमेन
सांग शिर्सलो पाठसंक्य नालगु सांग नंबर फोर, ओ अब्राहम यिसकु एलोई अदोनियात्री एकदेवम प्रभुदवु स्रूष्टि कर्तव्यवु एलोई अदोनियात्री एकदेवम प्रभुदवु स्रूष्टि कर्तव्यवु ओ अब्राहम यिसकु ईश्रायेलु देवम नीचनिवु
In the morning session, we have been considering about the three enemies of a Christian.
In Udaykalappu Bhagamlo, Christ's sonicukunnaattu mookuru shatrulugirinchim manamu gavini stavunnam.
Now, if we have to get victory over these enemies,
Ee shatrulam eda manam vijayam sadinchali ante?
Then, we should know who they are.
Va vijayam sadinchali ante, var yavaru anna sangatini manam erigali.
Now kindly turn with me to second Korinthi in chapter two and verse eleven.
Korinthilaguru rashna rendu padhtrikka, rendu adhyem padukonda vachnum dai chesi.
I like this verse very much.
Ee vachnumo nakentho isthamai, isthamai nettu vachnum.
In English, it is very emphatic but in Tamil, I found it is not very emphatic.
English lo chala kachitamga eemaatu undi, Tamil lo anta kachitenga raibadle, Telugu lo.
Those who know English and I find many are very highly qualified and especially in English.
Ekira kurchunavalu chala mandichaa, chala vidya gali nettu varu, English Bible gali untnar, dai chesi, gavini chindi English Bible nuvnuvaru.
Verse eleven.
Padukonda vachnumo.
Lest Satan should get an advantage of us, for we are not ignorant of his devices.
Neenemai naksheminchiyunte, satanu manalu mosaparchukunnatlu, minimitamo, kriestu samukamanduksheminchiyunnanu, satanu tantramalannu manamu erigani varamu kaamu.
Ah, so this verse says.
Ee vachnumi amuntundandi?
One, his devices.
Modhutidi, satanu ikka tantramulu.
Ah, tantram is a very good word, is tandrasali. So, then, we should not be ignorant of his devices.
Andeakkundava, nee ikka tantramalannu manamu erigakkunna, manam undakkududu.
Ah, we should be able to know the way in which he operates.
Satanu elagu vaani tantramalannu upegustado, aa vidhanani manamu erigina varamga undali.
Suppose police wants to catch a criminal, arrest him and get him.
Saat police varu, okka nerastinni bandinchia, thani patkavallani okka vela prathisthe.
You know, first they will do some homework.
Mottamadhutta, thanikmundo, varu konchum pani chestaru.
And what they will say, what is his name, what is his family background, what is his education, where he was trained, how he became a criminal, what is his history in committing crimes, all these things they will find out.
Athi, thanikmundo varinchesadu, anna peere ante, anna kutumam.
Brothers, you can come up to here little aside.
Sahodhiru konchum, etterandi?
Yes.
Police varu, aa nerastinugirinchathani, peere ante, kutumam ante, athandu, ekkad panchesadu, aina chadumante, eegi, ee nairala ruttilu nekatari, etla ochadu, thanu, elagu panchesada, aa vishyalanittni varu mundugavini sthar.
First, they will collect all these details.
Mottamadhutta, ee vishyalanittni varu sekaristhar samacharani.
Once they know, from these clues, they will be able to catch him.
Athi, ee vishyalanni okka saari variki, tellsin taravata, thani patkukodamo, suluga suluothuti.
So, if we have to get victory over Satan,
Alagunni, satanu eda manam vijayam pondali ante?
We should not be ignorant of his devices.
Va nee ikka tantramalannu vishyame, manamu erigani variga, manam undakkududu.
Suppose we are ignorant about his devices.
Ahne ikka tantralannu manamu erigani variga, manam unti.
Apostle Paul says,
Apostle Paul untnadu.
He will take advantage of us.
Varu manam vishyame, varu, manam eda pedethanani chalaishtadu.
Ah, so in other words,
Ekko maatil jeppanati?
We should know who is our enemy.
Manasatrur yoro, manam erigina varamai undali.
So, now we are going to study about Satan.
Satanugirinchii manamodyaniddam.
Then only we will see later on, how we can get victory.
Appudu taravata, thani eda manam elagu vijayam sampaadinchakalamo manamu chuddam.
Don't think he is a ordinary person.
Gavini chindi, athandu sadhana menattu vektiga meru bhaavichavutti.
He challenged God.
Devuni edane savalvisadu.
He tempted Jesus Christ.
Yesu pravunu shodinchadu.
Who are we? Nothing.
Anta kav, at varimundo, manamu, entatti varamo, manamu, ee, eemaasamo, lekkaletu varu.
We are peanuts.
Manamu, ee palli batani lanti varavali, valivudu.
So, we should not be ignorant of his devices.
Va nee ikka tantralan vishyame, manamu erigani variga, manam undavutdu.
We are, if we are ignorant, he will take advantage.
Manamu, ee erigani variga undi, varu manam eda pedethanani chalaishtadu.
So that is why we should know who he is.
Aakarnanbattu, ee apavadi, satanu yavaru annattu vishyani, manam tellsikavali.
Now, what we are going to study now is.
Ipudhu mano dyaninchey vishyamintanti?
Who is he?
Satanu yavaru.
Who was he?
Varu, munupu eemaayundinadu.
There were, we find, we find there are three archangels.
Manam chusnatle, devaakhimlo, mookuru pradana duthaluntinar.
Now, God is there, the most high God Jehovah.
Andarikantte, athyunnatamai nettu varai nettu, yohova devu unnadu.
Then the Lord Jesus Christ.
Taravata, pravani Yesu Kristvaru.
And the Holy Spirit, the true God.
Ee mookuru udha trithomai nettu devu ainchanar.
Now, under him,
Ayan devu nikinda?
There are three archangels.
Mookuru pradana duthaluntinar.
Ah, one of them was Lucifer.
Andhalo okadu Lucifer.
He was chiefest of the three.
Mookurlo udha vedu pradanaadu.
The other two we know, one is Michael, one is Gabriel.
Taravata, inga mikritai idharu, Mikailu, taravata Gabriel.
Just like, you know, in India or for that matter in any country, there are three armies. One is the military, what we call military, then there is air force, then there is the Indian navy.
Manam, prati sainyumlo, moodu bhaga leelagunte, aaritigab, vayusena, jelasena, taravata?
That ground, yes, military, military, Ranabam, I don't know what they call, anyway, we know what it is, army. So, there is a chief for each one of them.
Athi, ee moodu vivavakala guda, pradaniayinattu varu, mukkamayinattu varu, adhikari unthadu.
So there are three archangels.
Mookuru pradana duthaluntinaru.
Lucifer, Gabriel, Michael.
Lucifer, Mikailu, maryu Gabriel.
We are not going to talk about Gabriel and Michael.
Mikailu, taravata, Gabriel gurinchima, manam maatladanani.
But under them, there are millions of, millions of angels.
Athi, veerikinda, kotlakoladi duthaluntinar.
And they all obey the commandment of these archangels.
Ee pradana duthalaka adnala ku, veer lobeathar.
Now, Lucifer was one of them and the chiefest of them.
Athi, Lucifer ee pradana duthallo okaday, ee pradana duthallo mukkamayinattu varai untnadu.
Ah, now, we find about what was seen in two passages in the Word of God.
Devu vaakhimlo, ee Lucifer gurinchii, aina eemaayundinadu, annattu vishyani manaku, rendu bhagaaloo, rendu sthalalo managannipisundhi.
One is in the book of Isaiah and chapter fourteen.
Modhutidi, eshaagrandamupadhnaalko adhyemlo?
The other is Ezekiel chapter twenty-eight, eleven to nineteen.
Rendav bhagamo, escale gandamupirvayenvidhodhyamupadukundinandi, pantumidhovachnum varuku.
Ah, these are both the places we find about this Satan.
Ee rendu sthalallo, ee Lucifer satanugirinchii, na vibhanna manam chudavachu.
Now kindly turn with me to Isaiah fourteen, twelve to fifteen.
Eshaagrandamupadhnaalko adhyemlo, pandindinandi, padihainavachnum varukku, dai chesi, gavini chindi.
There are some more informations in Ezekiel, but you can read it if you want, you will get more information about Satan, but we don't want to allot much time.
Athi, ee Lucifer gurinchii, escale pirvayenvidhodhyanlo guda, vibhanna undi, athi manam ekku samayemo, ithaniki, keta inchatledu.
Verse twelve.
Pandavachnumo, padhnaalko adhyemlo, eshaaya.
Ah, read brother.
Tejo nakshatramaa, veeku vachuka, nuvvetlo akashundi padithivi, janamalannu padagutina, neevu, neelamattuko, etlo, narke padithivi.
And verse thirteen.
Padumodavachnumo, chadukunnavandhi, andrakalsi, neeno akashmanak ekkipovudino, devuni nakshatramalaku paigana, simhasana, hichintuno, uttaradikununa, sabaparvata, meeda kurchunduno.
Now verse twelve.
Pandavachun, gavini chidipudu.
Isaiah is asking or a question is asked. How thou, how art thou fallen from heaven, oh Lucifer, son of the morning, how art thou cut down to the ground, which weakened the nation? So there we find, he was in a very high position.
Athi, ekada, prashna adhugabartan, tejo nakshatramaa, veeku vachuka, nuvvetlo akashundi padithivi, janamalannu padagutina, neevu, neelamattu varukku, etlo, narke padithivi, athandu, pradhanam, bodhata, entho unnata sthanamalo undinattu vichiduta.
But we find he was fallen, verse twelve.
Athi, pandavachun, chusnatle, athandu padipoyadu.
And he is fallen from heaven.
Akashundi, paralokundi, padipoyadu.
We find his name, oh Lucifer, so we know that it is talking about Lucifer.
Ekada, tejo nakshatramaa, Telugu lo, English lo, Lucifer unundhi.
And he is cut down to the ground.
Varu, neelamattuko, varu, paragutabaddadu.
And verse thirteen.
Padumodavachunlo.
We find the reason why he was pushed out from his power sometime in eternity past, I will say.
Nittatthamika gathamalo, epudu, anaadikalamlo, varu, tanu unnata situnandi, varu, parathroebaddadu, aa vishyam, endukku annadi, padumodavachunlo, manu chustam.
What is the reason why he was pushed out?
Varu, paralokamundi, nettivevadan, throsivevadanik karnamintanti?
Thou hast said in thine heart, verse thirteen,
Padumodavachunlo.
I will ascend into heaven, I will exalt my throne above the stars of God, I will sit also upon the mount of the congregation in the sides of the earth.
Neeno akashmanak ekkipovudino, devuni nakshatramalaku paigana, simhasana, hichintuno, uttaradikununa, sabaparvata, meeda kurchunduno.
Verse fourteen.
Padhnaalko untnagavini chidipu.
I will ascend above the heights of the clouds and I will be like the Most High.
Megamandalam edikey ekkeduno, mahonuttinutho, nannu samaninigacheskunduno, ani, neevu, manusalo anukuntivigada?
God knew, the Most High God knew what was going on in the mind of this creature, this Lucifer.
Ee Lucifer, ee manusalo, eemi sambavissundu, ee aalochunavosunayo, devu eriguntnadu.
He said, now I want to be above Most High.
Varankunnadu, neeno, devuni kantte, unnatanga, nenu, neen hichinchukundadu.
He was not satisfied with all the power which he already enjoyed.
Devu, iduvarike, tanuki chinnattu, unnata saanamo, adhikaram, antattu vatti, variki trupthileedu.
But he wanted to go high.
Inkada, devu chinni, thanikantte, udha, hichchuka, etinchukundamakundadu.
And so, he was pushed out.
Aakarnanbattu, varu, aa sthanamundi throsivevadadu.
Verse fifteen.
Padihainavachnumo.
Yet thou shall be brought down to hell, to the sides of the pits.
Neevu, pathaalunnakku, narkamalo, okamoolaku throyebadithivi.
So this much we, if we know, that is good enough for now.
Ipadikaitte, intavarku, manam tellsikunte, saripotutti?
Once upon a time, he enjoyed the good offices or good feelings or good mind of God, giving him lot of power.
Okanakasamaymilo, devu neeka unnata adhikaramuno, devu neeka santu, manusuno, taravata, unnata sthanamuno, athadu, anukuchadu.
He was not willing to be satisfied with the power which he had already.
Aina, devu, iduvarike, chinnattu, aa sthanamo, adhikaramto, varki trupthikalagaleedu.
But he wanted to go above the Lord.
Athi, devu nikiki, paigathano, hichinchavali, aasipadadu.
And he was fallen down.
Alaguna, varu, throsivevadadu.
Ah, so he fell down.
Varu, kinaki, neelaku, throsivevadadu.
From that day,
Adhinam modhilkuni.
He has declared a war.
Devu needa yuddani prakatinchadu.
Somehow, I should be above him.
Eedho kiritiga, neeno, eena ku paigana, neeno, undali.
But at the same time, he had access to God.
Adesamaymilo, devu nee sanidiki, athadu, praveesham kali unnadu.
Once in a way, he will make a visit and go and see.
Apdopudu, devu nee sanidiki ochi, devu nee chuchivellipoyavadu.
In the book of Job, we find,
Job gandamam, manu chustam.
About one such thing.
Atvanti, okasandarmam akadu.
So one day,
Okanuka dinana?
He went and met a father in heaven.
Ekada, paralokamundanakanti, tandrini, devu nee chuchadu.
So said, ah, what are you doing, going round and round?
Doenchesadu, sataraantte, lokamalo, naludikulani, thiruthasancharanchesadu.
Put your eye on my servant, perfect man, Job, no?
Na daasudu, parip, nirdoshi, hinattu, aika, yobununu gavini chavannanadu.
Ah, like that, he used to go and God knew what was in his mind.
Athi, ilaguna, lokavanta, sancharanchavadu, athi, devu, aina manusalo unnattu, thalamplunu eriguntnadu.
I will say like this.
Ilaguna, neen, neen chaptana.
He saw Job, Satan saw Job.
Satanu, yobunudu, gavini chadu, chuchadu.
He was a very, very, very pious man.
Entho bhaktiparudathadu.
Ah, very pious man, a perfect man.
Entho paripoorunadu, bhaktiparadu.
We are not going to study, but you can read Job chapter one, there you will find all what I am saying.
Adhyemlo, neenchepetattu, vishyalanni, guddakadu, na manam.
He was a man of prayer.
Praradhanaparadu.
He gave many sacrifices to the Lord.
Devu nee korike arpinchadu.
Ah, now I want to say one thing.
Okka vishyam chappalan kutunadu.
Yesterday, we had a child dedication.
Neenadithinana, chinnabidanu, pratisinchinattu, bacharekalani?
Many times, I take Job chapter one.
Aneekasaralu, yob gandamokto adhyem, neen chustan, gavini stan.
There, if you can take, you take and read that verse, Job chapter one.
Chudandi, yob gandamokto adhyemlo?
No, that is something to do with the children.
Pilalavishyamlo, manachevachnu, okka pram, pramkaminitu vishyamundhi.
Ah, there was three, I think, he used to have sacrifices, thinking that my children, who had plenty of riches, he, they may, they, they may commit sin, verse three, eh?
No, aidavachnum, aidavachnum.
I am not able to take Bible, there is a problem, five, you read verse five?
Varu, varu vindu dinamana, dinamalu puirtikaaga, yobu, tanakumaralu papamu chesi, tamahrudamilo devu nee dusinchiremo, ani, varuni, pilo namenchii, varu nee pavitraparich.
Even in rich families, even believers, there may be something wrong, nothing wrong about it also, they will say, let us go to hotel and have some nice time, we have got plenty of money.
Danavantalo, kutumalo, varu, chala dabuntitikavatti, varu, pillalu, hotelgeldamo, athla, athvanti, avishyalanai.
The people of the world also do and we also do as believers sometimes.
Lokasalu chesavunaru, visvasalu, manam guddakonkonsal chesnam.
But his worry was,
Athi, yobu ikunattu, chintad.
That my children may commit sin.
Alaguna, na pillalu, papamu chesatharemo, annattu, aalochunainakundi?
That is what that verse says.
Adhe, ee vachnum antavundhi.
So he was all the time praying.
Elappudu, athadu, praradhanachesavunadu.
You have been very good to me.
Pravva, neevu, entho, dayagalikinavadu, na, na vishyamna.
Given me a very good character.
Athi, neeno, manchi lakshunkali.
You have given me lot of riches.
Neevu, nakko, entho, ayswaram nichadu.
And my children are enjoying my riches.
Na pillalu, na kuchina, ee ayswaramu, var aravistunnadu.
And they used to have parties.
Varu, ilaguna vindu cheskunta unnadu.
But if you just gather and have a social time and having some good food, there may be nothing wrong.
Athi, ilaguna, koodikalsuvachunavu, mancha, aharamo, bochinachadu, andhalo tapenledu.
But sometimes, it breaks down the barrier and commits sin.
Athi, konkonsalalu, hathalannu dati, papamu chese, askarmu.
So Job was worried and he was praying, that my children should not commit sin, because they are in the habit of having parties.
Ilaguna, partylu kali gunnattu, alavatu varkundikavatti, na pillalu, ekkadu, papamu chesatharemo, annattu, adiguluchinta, yobu kali guntnadu.
So I used to take this portion and say, we should be like Job regarding children.
Pilalavishyamlo, manam yobu antti, sobhavu, manu kali gundalani, neen, padhipadhi chaptavunt.
That they should not commit sin, having parties.
Ilaguna, partylu chesi, papamu chaykunda undali.
Anyway, that is by the way.
Adi, pakka, manav, option kadi.
So, Job was a righteous man.
Yobu, neatimantudu.
And Satan wanted to touch him.
Satanu, thani thakajuschadu.
He wanted to take away all the things.
Aina kunattu, samastamuno, thiisvealan kunnadu.
But he was a perfect man.
Athadu, paripoorunadu, innattu, manusuno.
He was an overcomer.
Athadu, jainchvadainchanadu.
Whether there is riches, he is an overcomer.
Ayswari, ayswari unnadu, athadu, jainchvade.
If he had lot of children, he was happy and he was a overcomer.
Athadu, santanam unnadu, jainchvaduka, santoshanga undinadu.
If he had very good health, he was a overcomer.
Manchi, aarukankali gunna, athadu, jainchvaduka undinadu.
At the same time.
Adesamaymilo?
He was an overcomer when he became sick.
Athadu, roge ainappudu, udha, jainchvaduka undinadu.
When every part of his body was affected by swords.
Tharadheha, anta udha, kurpulato, punlato, adhe, rogekrastamayinappudu, udha.
He was suffering.
Entho, srampantavunadu.
When he lost all his riches.
Tharadu, ayswari, antattu, pogutukunadu.
He was an overcomer.
Aina, athvanti, paristhalo, jainchvaduka undinadu.
Ah, when he, when he lost all his children, all of them died.
Pillalandharu, okkasaari chenipayar.
Read that, it is a very sad reading.
Edi, manachalite, entho dukkamo, vedan kaligadu.
One man comes and says, all your riches are gone.
Okadasadu, nee, ayswari, anta udha, nastamipayadu.
Another man comes, all your children are dead.
Inkavadasadu, nee, pillalandharu, chenipayarantadu.
After some day, he gets rose.
Tharavata, taravatkuntisamanki, olantha, rogamu.
So, there are two, three principles here.
Ekada, rendu budi, neemaaluntinai.
You know, Satan cannot touch us.
Satanu, manalu thakaledu.
Now, there are some people, they come and tell me,
Konduro, nadagirukochi, ilagantar.
You know, Satan is after me.
Satanu, na, 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 ventabaduthunadu, ndianantar.
Ah, Satan is doing this, that, and I am affected by bad dreams, I am affected by some mandravadam, you know what is mandravadam, sorcery?
Valantaro, chisatana, na, ventabaduthunadu, naaku, pida kalalosunai, tathai, chetabadi chesunaru, ee mantra, mantraal chesunarani, antavuntar.
Ah, yes, even children of believers, children of God servants.
Gavini chindi, devuni pillalu, devuni sevukalapillalu, ilagantar.
Principle number one.
Gavini chindi, orakki neema. Nu, visvasivaiti.
No mandravadam, no sorcery, no Satan can do anything to you.
Ee chetabadi gani, ee mantraal gani, ee tantral gani, nee meeda pani chalelu.
You are safe in the arms of Jesus.
Yesu pravari, khasallo, neevu, kshemamuka, padrungavauntinadu.
There is, there is a boundary around you.
Neechuttu, devu, ikka, kancha vesiguntnadu.
Ah, Satan cannot enter that boundary.
Kanchanu dati, satan, pralidu.
Ah, in the book of Sacaria, I think, verse, chapter one and verse five, there it is written, that there is a boundary around us, around our family, around our house or our things.
Jekkregandamokto adhyemayidavachnum ankuta, ekada, manaku, mana chuttu, mana pillalu.
There is a wall of fire.
Devu, agni kancha, agni prakarumunchiguntnadu.
This is what I pray.
Edi, neenu praradhanayilagachastam.
Lord, we, we are sleeping now.
Pravva, ipudu, meemu, nidrabothavuntnam.
Ah, we never, we don't lock our gate.
Ma, gate lock veiyam.
Because sometimes, some brothers will come in the middle of the night and then they have to enter, so we, we only pray, Lord, be thou a wall of fire around me, as our house, our prayer house, where I live.
Ekada, ma, gate lock, eemidikantte, appurupudu, chala, ratthri guddakundar, savadala stavuntaru, praradhancheshita, pudu, pravva, ma chuttu, ma inti chuttu, ee praradhanamandiram chuttu, miru, agni kanchaga, mirundandi, aini praradhancheshatunadu.
It is true.
Edi vastham.
There is a wall of fire around you.
Neechuttu, edi, agni prakarumunadi.
Ah, there is a boundary around, around Job and his family.
Yobu, aina kutumam chuttu, devu, ee kancha vesiguntnadu.
Now, Satan wants to attack.
Satanu, thani eda daadi chayalankunadu.
He cannot do it without the permission of the Father.
Tandinattu, devu neeka, anuvathilekunna, thani, athelit.
This fellow went and made a challenge.
Satanu, veli, devunagara, savalvisadu.
Ah, why is he perfect?
Endukadadu, yadaravantutukunnadu.
Why is he worshiping you?
Endukku, athadu, neen, aradhisinadu.
Why is he living for you?
Ne, ne korike, athadu, endukjuvisunadu.
Eh, what he lacks, he has got plenty of money, plenty of camels, plenty of goats, plenty of oxen, eh?
Aina, endukjuvisunadu, aina, anni unnay, chalinenata, bisthar, menattu, osu sambadundhi, pillalu unnadu, ayswari mundhi.
He has got many children.
Pillalu untinadu.
Oh, they are all very happy.
Vakkavatti, valandharu, santoshinadu.
No wonder is this thing.
Enninu vichavakavatti, athandu, neeko, bhaktiparadai, nee, vishyame, yadaravantutukunnadu.
Ah, let all these things go.
Okkasari, vitannidinu, thiisvese.
He will curse God.
Ne, mokamidane, neenu, dusishtaranadu.
God took up that challenge.
Devu, ee savalno, aina swikrinchadu.
He said, okay, go ahead.
Alagaitte, sare, satana, nu, kutukalu.
But don't break his life.
Tanaprananu matrana, thakadani, veelledanadu.
So Satan did number one, two, three, four.
Kabatti, satan.
Finally, tormented him.
Atharinigennu, kashaldiskachu, rokati, rendu, moodu, alaguna, rogamu, entho vedanav.
Everything he lost.
Alaguna, yobu, tanakali gunadu, antattu, neevu, kolpoyadu.
So the principle is,
Athi, neemaamintanti?
We are protected.
Manamu, kaapadabadi, padrapachabadi.
Every believer is protected.
Prati visvasi, kaapadabadi, padrapachabadi, varu.
God has given us wisdom, don't do foolish things.
Athi, devu, manaku, jnana michadu, kabatti, avivekamintattu, kariyalu chayavutti.
We have to be careful.
Athi, manan, jagratagavundali.
Especially in a country like India, especially sisters, we have to be very careful.
Athi, baraddeeshmalanti, deeshamlo.
Don't tempt God.
Jagratavundali, maru, visheshinka, sahodhirilu, jagratavundali.
But God's protection is against us.
Edi, eemaayinadu, devu neeka, kaapudala, padrutha, manachuttu unadi.
Now Satan cannot touch us.
Satanu, manal, thakaledu.
If he touches.
Okveela, thakinattu, late.
He has to take the permission of the Father.
Devu neeka, anuvathithisikavali.
Then only, Satan will trouble us.
Appude, satanu, manalani, kalavarpettavachu.
And there may be, there will be a purpose for it.
Andeakkundu, thani mitteme, oku, deesham udha untundhi.
Even Jesus said.
Yesu pravarnarukuda.
Ah, I think it is in Luke chapter twenty-two, verse twenty-four, I think, there is a picture, Satan has desired of you, that he may shift you.
Pravu, sat, petru gurinchinadu, petru, apavadi, neenu, koriunchinadu, neenu, jallinchalani.
Ah, so that all the chaff may be removed, you know, why you do shifting, sisters do this shifting.
Ee sahodhirilu, jallistar, endukjallistar, ndi, tadvara, andhalo, unnattu, pottu, ausunani, vishyalanni, guddakthiisvevadali.
Lord Jesus Christ knew that Satan wants to tempt him, tempt Peter.
Petru nu, apavadi, shodinchalannattu, vishyani, pravu, eriguntnadu.
So he gave him a warning.
अतनी कोका हेचरिकेचडू.
सैतन विल सिफ्ट यू.
सातानु निनु जल्लिस्ताडु, पेतुरु.
बट व्हेन यू आर स्ट्रांग्टेंट.
न्यू बलपर्चबड़ी इन तरवाता.
यू सर्व डी लोड.
न्यू प्रभुनु सेविंचा.
यू, यू सर्व, आई मीन स्ट्रांग्टेंट आई ब्रदर.
नी सहोदरलु बलपर्चाली.
सम्बडी वास टेकन डी वर्स कैन रीड.
वरना इरूरूरूनालु, लुकास्वर्तची सरणी.
दिस अरे वर्सेस विच वी ऑल नो.
निदरकी वच्चन.
एन्यूबरी गोट इट?
थर्टी सिक्स.
यू से डी रेफरेंस एंड रीड.
थर्टी वन, मुप्पयुकटी मुपरेंडी, चलवेंदी.
लॉडली. हाँ, व्हेन यू आर रिपेंडेड, स्ट्रांग्टेंट योर ब्रदर एंड और मेक दम परफेक्ट.
न्यू, न्यू सिद्धपर्चबड़ी इन तरवाता, नी सहोदरलु बलपर्चमो.
सो, यू वास अन ओवरकमर.
इलागुना अतुर जैंचवाड़ेगा उंदीनार.
व्हाय गॉड अलाउड इट इन डी, इन डी लाइफ ऑफ़ जोब?
योबु जीवतमुलु ए सम्बविंचिंदी.
इट वास नॉट अरे स्मॉल सफरिंग फॉर एन ऑर्डिनरी मैन.
इदि साधारमेन अन्नत्वटी व्यक्तिकलिकन, साधारमेन अन्नत्वटी स्रमल कावंडी.
आई विल से.
नेन अंता नो.
देट इस व्हाय डी बुक ऑफ़ जोब इस देयर इन डी बाइबल.
आकाननपटी, योबु ग्रंधमु बाइबल लुंदी.
थ्रू डाउन डी सेंचुरीज, डी लाइफ एंड सफरिंग एंड एक्सपीरियंस ऑफ़ दिस ओवरकमर जोब, हस बीन अरे ग्रेट एंकरेजमेंट तू मेनी बिलीवर्स ओवर डी ईयर्स.
शताब्दालुंदी, योबु ग्रंधमो, ई दायवचन नियोक्क जीवतमो, स्रमपोंतुनाट्टु वारीकी, अदि दैरियमो, प्रोत्साहन, हेचरिका गा योक्का ग्रंधमुंदिंदी.
यस, एवं टुडे.
ई दिनमुड़ा.
मेनी आर स्ट्रांग्टेंट बाय डी बुक ऑफ़ जोब.
योबु ग्रंधुद्वारा, नेकुल बलपर्चबड़ी, वारु बद्रपच्छबड़ताउनार.
मेनी आर एंकरेज्ड तू बी ओवरकमर्स बाय रीडिंग डी बुक ऑफ़ जोब.
योबु ग्रंधमु चदुरुद्वारा, नेकुलो, जैनवंतलुगा वारु, प्रोत्साहिंच्छबड़ताउनार.
हाँ, सो, देट इस अरे अबाउट सैतन, देट इस अबाउट इस फॉर.
अदि आइन योक्का पत्तनमु गुरिंचिनाट्टु विश्चयम.
नो, फ्रॉम डेट डे.
आदिनमुंदी.
ही इस, ही आस बीन वर्किंग.
अतुर पनिचैस्ताउनारु, अपवादी.
नो, आई एम, व्हाट आई एम गोइंग तू से इस माय ओन, माय ओन, सो, यू नी नॉट आव्ट तू एग्री विथ मी, इफ यू डोन वांट तू एग्री.
इप्पुर, इकुम, इकुम इकुम नेन चेप्पे दी, नेनो ना अभिप्रायमु, ओक़वेला मेरे एके विविस्ते, एके विविविच वच्चु, लेख पुदले.
व्हाट आई फील.
नेनो भाविंचे दिन्तें.
सैतन वाद गोन एंड टोल्ड गॉड.
सातानु वेल्ली, देवुंतो इलागर इंडोच.
अरे, यू आर क्रिएटेड ऑल स्टार्स एंड गैलेक्सी एंड ऑल डेट.
यवानु अंतरिक्षमलो, नक्षत्रालु विटन्नी.
आस वी सो यस्टरडे, यू नो हो तू कंट्रोल ऑल दिस.
निन अदि नाम मन चूचिनाट्टुगा, नु एन्नी नियंत्रित, नियंत्रित.
एंड यू आर क्रिएटेड ऑल डी एनिमल्स एंड ट्रीज एंड ऑल डेट.
तरोते, पोशुलुनु, तरोतो वृक्षमुलुनु विटन्नी निनु.
नन ऑफ़ दम कैन रिबेल अगेंस्ट यू.
इंदलु एरी गुड़ा, नीकु विरोधमुगा तिरुबाट चैले.
देन यू वाद आव्ट आय. यू क्रिएट सम वन बीइंग जस्ट लाइक यू.
देव, नीलांटी ओका मनुष्यनु सुरिजिंचो.
सो यू टूक अप डेट चैलेंज.
देवुडु आसवाल दिस.
आई एम गोइंग तू क्रिएट अरे क्रिएचर, डेट इस मैन, डेट इस अरे, इन माय वेज.
नेनो ना स्वरुपमुलु, ना पोलिकलु, नरुणी नेन सुरिजिस्तानु.
यू वाद अरे चैलेंज.
देवुडु सवाल विसिंदोच.
देव विल रिबेल यू. आई विल सी डेट दे डिसॉबे यू, रिबेल यू.
ई माउन नूचेसन ई नरुडु, नीकु विरोधमुगा तिरुबाट जस्तुलु, नेन चूस्तानन.
देट इस व्हाय, व्हेन एडम एंड यू वास क्रिएटेड, यू वास देयर आस अरे सर्पन, डिसीविंग.
आदाम अवालु सुरिजिंच्छबड़ी तरवाता, आ तोटलो, वाडो सर्पमुले वच्ची, वारणी मोस्किंचा.
बिकॉज़ यू आस इन्फ्लुएंस, आई एम टेलिंग यू, यू आस इन्फ्लुएंस एवरी सिस्टम इन डी वर्ल्ड.
अलावना वाडो, ई लोकमुनाट्टु ती प्रति समस्तनो, प्रति पद्धतिनी, वाडो प्रभावितंचेस.
देन यू वाद विफाइन टुडे, यू लुक अट डी वर्ल्ड.
इब्बुल लोकमुन चोरंडी.
आई एम टेलिंग यू, अरे एडमिनिस्ट्रेशन.
ई परिपालन व्यवस्थांता.
देट इस डी गवर्नमेंट.
प्रभुतुमुल.
God of this world.
He is a god of this world.
Day star.
Wake up.
Son of morning.
The morning.
And liar.
Abbot.
Ah, and father of lies.
The son of the world. The power of the air. The tempter.
And prince of the devils.
The devil.
Or Bel-Sabab, Matthew chapter twelve twenty-four anyway.
Bel-Sabab.
Son of perdition.
The man of sin.
The accuser of the brethren.
The anointed cherub. The king of kings.
Antichrist.
The great dragon. The enemy.
Twenty-seven names are there. Some of them we are very, very, you know, common and we know it. He is a liar and father of lies. He is a deceiver. He is a murderer. He is a scatterer. He is the one who brings division. He brings strife. Everything is death in a very subtle way. That is why apostle says in second Corinthians chapter eleven and verse two and three. He says, I am jealous over you.
You read one, two, three.
Second Corinthians chapter eleven.
He says, you should not kill your brother. Why? Because he is a holy person and he is going to marry Christ. So he will kill him and torture him. He will kill you and destroy your mind. He will kill you and destroy your mind.
You know, he says, I want to, apostle says, I want the bride of Christ should be a virgin.
But I am worried and he compares Adam, Eve, second Adam and the church.
Adam and Eve were deceived by Satan. Now, the second Adam is Lord Jesus Christ. Now, the second Adam is Lord Jesus Christ. And he has a bride, that is the church. I am concerned whether he will come and tempt you and take away from that high and lofty position as a virgin for Christ.
They don't want to take the verses where it says condemning drinking in the word of God. But we'll take one verse. You understand?
Satan codes Bible.
So, how he are overcome?
But I'm saying, yes, it is written in the Bible like that.
But it is also written, man shall not live by brother. One is the pride of life.
One is a very genuine need hunger.
Actually, every part of the body is tempted by Satan. Then the soul, that is name.
What did he say? He took him to a top place and said, come on jump. I will say his angels will guard you, you will not get hurt. Suppose, Jesus was ready to jump. Suppose somebody says, I am going to climb this mobile tower, I am going to jump, nothing will happen to me, what will happen?
He will say, ah, one man is doing this, he will not fall, he will not die.
People will come with the video. They want to take the video. And then suppose, nothing happens to him and he jumps. Oh, that video will be viral all over the world, it will go, isn't it? He will get lot of name. I get the name, I am, I am great. That is where he was, he was tempting him. One is the bodily need. Then giving you name fame. You know, people are after fame. Why people want to become silly film stars? You get name. When you, when our name comes in the newspaper, we are very happy. When we appear in the TV, we are very happy, we get the name.
We want name.
Thirdly, relationship with God. He says, he showed the glory of the world and said, I will give you everything.
Only what you do, you worship me.
So, his worship is a relationship to the father as question. I will give you all the glory of this world. Tempted him by offering. You see, one thing we should notice in that passage. Lord did not tell him, hey, what are you talking, all these things are belongs to my father, I am going to inherit everything.
Yes, Prabhu, Satan, you are not an anta, naadhi, naathandri, idantati, neeno, varusunni.
This is created by whom, it is created by me. My father is Elion, the master or the owner or the Prabhu of the whole thing.
For a period of, I will say, for a period of time, God has allowed Satan to have a way.
What is his end? Then shall he say also unto them on the left hand, depart from me, ye cursed into the everlasting fire, prepared for the devil. And his angels. So, what is his end? The end does not come. But Jesus prophesied in twenty five forty one. A everlasting fire is prepared for the devil. You know what unbelievers are doing? They will say, we want to join you, devil, I will also come with you. I will go to hell, we will see.
What is it?
Finally, it means revelation nineteen ten. I fell at this field to worship him and he said unto me, see thou, do it not. I am thy fellow servant and the brethren that have the testimony of Jesus worship God for the testimony of Jesus is the spirit of prophecy.
And the God, we will pray for you, 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 we will pray for you.
And also revelation chapter twenty verse ten. The devil that deceived them was cast into the lake of fire and brimstone, where the beast and the false prophet are and shall be tormented day and night forever and ever.
So, we have seen what was seen and what he became and what is he doing today and still he is doing.
But remember, he is going to be punished and he will be put in the lake of fire.
He is deceiving, knowing that he has got very short time.
So, that is what he is doing. I will, I will continue another ten minutes with your permission. I, I want to say about the second enemy. That is the world. So, world is an enemy. Then the word which is used in the word of God is cosmos. It is, listen to me very carefully, then only you will understand, otherwise you will get confused. Now, the word world is used in several meanings. One is the people of the world. Now, for example, God so loved the world. That world and the world which we are talking is different. So, the very same word is used in cosmos. It is used for earth. There they use this word. Now, John eight twelve, we all know, I am the light of the world. That is, I am the light of the people of the world. People who are in darkness saw a light and that is the Lord Jesus Christ. So, when we see the word cosmos, that is the word world in the Bible. It may be regarding the earth. You know, for example, God created the world, that means God created the earth, that means earth. God loved the world. That is the people of the world. All the people of the world. I am the light of the world. That is not the world which is mentioned here. So, we are not talking about God so loved the world, I am the light of the world and all, that meaning we are not taking. They are neutral, they are not enemies. Now, what is the world? It is a world system. It is a system. The ethically bad sense of the world refers to the order or arrangement under which Satan has organized the world of unbelieving mankind. But there is force there. Now, for example. You know, the military, you know, the police, the judiciary, the administration, all, that is a system. They use force. I will arrest you, I will put you in behind bars. I will send you to prison. I will kill you. Force. That is organized. Then people are going according to those cosmic principles. But there is force there. I will arrest you, I will put you in behind bars. I will send you to prison. I will beat you. I will kill you. Force. That is a system. It is very much organized. Force, then greed. You know, market is there, industry is there, why, why they are there? Everybody wants, they are greed, I want more money, more money. You will get coffee for twenty rupees. But you go to the airport, it costs two thirty rupees.
Airport, two hundred rupees, that is coffee.
Same coffee, why greed? They want to have more money. Greed. That is a system. They think that is right. There is greed everywhere, the masters, they have greed. Orders, so the companies, they exploit the people. If we don't go to work, we don't get salary. It is based on force, greed, selfishness, ambition and pleasure. We, this new model, it is punished. Force, greed, selfishness, ambition. This world system is powerful. With military might. But it is outwardly religious. And they will behave very cultured way. You know, in North India, if you go to one shop. You know, it is very interesting. Then suppose they, you want to buy something. Say, I want to buy one watch. Then what is the cost? Then he will say, say a thousand rupees. And then we will say, can you reduce? Arre, aplelo, aplelo. Greed. He doesn't want to reduce one paisa. But what is he telling? You take it free. You are Maharaja. Outwardly, very polite, very elegant, I have seen this. This all these shops is yours, take it. Behave like, behave like very elegant, very good. But what is behind, he is not willing to reduce one paisa. Outwardly religious, scientific, elegant. Seething with national ambitions. And commercial rivalries. It is upheld in any real crisis only by armed forces. It is a world system. And it is influenced by Satan, that is what I am trying to say. Outwardly, very nice, very decent, very polite. So, that is a world, that is the world. There are more things. Now, kindly turn with me to Mark. Chapter ten. There, we have no time to read, our time is up. But I will tell you what it is. You know, Jesus disciples were there. And in this portion, we find two of his disciples are going to Jesus. Goes to Jesus. Then they say, Lord, we have a request. When you come on the glory. My son should be on your left and right. That is a request the mother is making. And then the Lord said. He said, you, are you willing to pass through the baptism I am passing through? Are you willing to drink the cup which I am going to drink? What he meant was. This conversation which is there in Mark chapter ten. This happened just before he is crucified. We know that the Lord will come in his glory. And we know that he will establish his kingdom. We also know that we will reign with him. And the apostles are going to get high post. They will be next to the king of kings and lord of lords. And we will also, if we are overcomers, we will be getting high post at that time. That is what the Bible says. So, when this mother asked regarding the children. Jesus cannot say, I will not come on glory. But before their glory, there is the cross. He has to undergo the suffering on the cross. What is telling, will you be able to go through all that? Then they say, oh yes, we will suffer. Then he, then Jesus said. Yes, you will also suffer. That is true also. Ultimately, all the disciples suffered. Only John, who was in exile, he was not crucified. But all other people, either they were beheaded or they were killed or they were killed with a spear, you know like that. They were all apostles preaching the gospel all over the world. So, he says. That is the conversation between the mother and Jesus. He said, you will pass through the suffering, but it is up to the father to decide who will sit on the right and the left. Now, I come to the point. Other disciples were sitting there. They saw it. This fellow, these people, when they, maybe they heard some words also. And they were telling, hey, these three two, when there, the mother went there, Jesus gave all power to them, what about us? These disciples, they were telling, they were telling, they were telling. There was jealousy. There was hatred. There was anger. Because they did not get all these positions. Now, come to forty two. Jesus called them to him and said unto them, you know not that they which are accounted to rule over the Gentiles, exercise lordship over them and their great ones exercise authority upon them, so shall it not be among you? Whoever shall be great among you shall be your minister. But whoever shall be great among you shall be your minister. And whose warrior of you will be the cheapest shall be servant of all. Even the son of man came not to be ministered unto, but to minister and to give his life a ransom for many. It shall not be among you. So, seeking power. Seeking to rule others. That is the world. That is why he said, this shall not be among you. What the Gentiles seek. Are accounted to rule over the Gentile, exercise lordship over them. They exercise authority. But this so, but so shall it not be among you? Whoever shall be great among you shall be, shall be your minister. So, we have to understand this word. Now, I want to say one more word and close. There is a difference between world and things of the world. Now, you take this paper, this is a thing of the world. Take this watch, this is the thing of the world. This such as fact, it is a thing of the world. Everything is of the world. Now. So, world is there and things of the world is there. Now, what did Jesus, what does the Bible say? Love not the world, nor the things of the world. He does not say, don't use anything of the world. When I am using a watch or a mic or a paper, I am not committing sin. Suppose somebody buys a car. He has become very bold. Once upon a time, he was going in the cycle, now he has got a car. I will say, if he loves the car, he is doing wrong. If you have an attachment to that car. Then that is sin. We should not love. We should not have any attachment. But using it for our use, for our family, for ministry, nothing wrong. First John chapter two verse fifteen, love not the world, nor the things of the world. So, we should understand. Love of money is the root of all evil. I will say, money is the root of all evil, no, love of money is the love. So, money in itself or the things of the world in itself, whether it is mobile or whether it is a mic or whatever, that is not a sin. The one attitude. Many people, they buy not for use but for show. Status symbol. If I use a car which is ten years old, so I will sell it and buy a new car. Having that car is not a sin. But your attitude to that buying that car or buying that thing or showing off by having a bungalow for others so that you will get a good name, all these things are of the world. so that you will get a good name, all these things are of the world. Car kunkunne vaikari, adi chupichkodamo, daan gurinchikaropadam, idi, ah, ah, lokavyaavastha sambhand. Have the right understanding of what is written in the Bible. So we should have the right attitude, we should not have any attachment to it. Then even if we lose it. We will not feel bad. Anyway, Lord gave, Lord do, praise be to the Lord. So we should not have an attachment, our attachment should be to the Lord. Have an attachment to the word of God. Love the word of God. Rejoice in the word of God. Love the house of God. Serve the house of God. Be available for any work. And our church is very, very famous for it. You know, one foreigner came to Jhawashama many years ago. There is found one person who is an elder, he is a pune, a chaprasi, or a klasaur. But there were members who were holding officer post, engineer post. When they are in the office, he is a pune or a chaprasi. And he is the boss. But when you come to church. He is the elder, and this man is a ordinary believer, he will submit to the elder. The servant of God who came from abroad, he was surprised. He said, this is the church. There is no difference. Irrespective of your social status, you sit in a line and eat. Same rice, same sambar, same rasam. Sitting shoulder to shoulder. Loving each other because we are washed by the precious blood of Jesus Christ. So, I want to conclude. We should know who is our enemy. We should know how it influences us. To pull you down, put you down, commit sin. Take away all your joy and happiness. And then you blame God. That is what Satan wants. No, I will tell you something, many other people, they even claim things and finally get into trouble. Especially our Pentecostal friends. They will speak as if they are men of faith. They will say, oh, ondava re sevar, God will do it. One day, I, one of our, one of one believer, he telephoned me and said, my brother is very sick, you please go and visit in Goiampathur. From another city, that sister called. My anna girl, she is very nervous, she is very anxious. So I took the address and I went there. And I went there, one man was in the bed. By the look of it, I knew he is very, very serious. But his wife was a hardcore Pentecostal. She was sitting in the bed along with him. And he was singing a very good song. Then I asked her, what are you, who are you, and all that. Then she said, by profession, she is a nurse and she is a believer. Then I came to know, this man lived a very sinful life. I don't know what sickness it was, she was not telling me. I don't know, maybe some bad disease, which she doesn't want to say. But one thing I know, he is dying. Then I asked, why don't you take her to hospital? No, one prophet has prophesied that he will be healed. And God will use him mightily in the days to come. I said, he is dying. I have taken him to hospital. I am a nurse, if I want, I will give IV injection. I said, did he eat anything? With great difficulty, one idli, one idli. I said, he cannot eat, he cannot sit up. He lived a sinful life, from what she told, I could make out. I knew he is serious. I know, no doctor will take a patient like him on the verge of death. So I said, at least for name's sake, take him to hospital, but she was not, she was refusing. I have got the faith. Prophet, my pastor has said he will live. Then I knew what is required. So I called him. I told him, have you accepted Jesus Christ? He cannot talk, he cannot respond. Then I gave him the gospel. Very, went very close, talked very high voice. I told him, brother, you are a sinner, you are a sinner. If you die, where will you go? You accept the Lord. He cannot talk a word. Whether he is hearing or not, I know, I don't know. He is very serious. Then I said, I am going to pray, prayer for you. I know you cannot repeat. By faith, I am praying on your behalf. Accept the Lord. You are born in a Christian family. But you are, you have done sins. And your days are numbered. And accept the Lord. So I prayed a prayer, as we, I said yesterday, a proxy prayer, as if he is praying, Lord, I am a sinner, I know you died on the cross, like that, I prayed for him. Then I prayed to the Lord and said, Lord, here is a man who is singing, have mercy upon him, his father I know, he is a very good man, and his sister I know is a believer, her husband is an elder in our church, they are all believers, but this fellow is like this, so have mercy, Lord, have mercy, have mercy, I prayed. His wife didn't like all this. That is why you are praying like this. That was her attitude. I went home. Next day, I got a phone call saying he died. One way, I was not surprised. Another way, I was happy. Then I went there. Then the same woman was singing and claiming to be a very faithful, I mean, a woman of faith, her singing, you are going on crying. Left me alone, Lord, forsue me. And all are crying. A Christian's house. That man does some ministry, pastor or something, his father. That is what I found. Then there were so many women, they were all in white and white, from that I know that they are Pentecostal sisters. I said, what you are doing? Shame in this neighborhood. Don't you know the Bible? Is it the way we should respond? Then I took control. I said, come on, sing some songs. Then they started singing. So the crying and all came down. Then I gave the gospel. And I gave the testimony. Now what I am trying to say. You see, Satan had a victory, I will say, one way, one way. Why? This woman blamed God. A false hope. A false faith. Not realistic. But, and at the end, when he died, she is blaming God. That is not correct. We should be realistic. But I was happy. Why? Before his death, I could at least pray for him. Whether he has gone to heaven or hell, that Lord only knows. But as a servant of God, I did my duty. Although they are not belonging to our congregation. So they were started singing. I said, you keep quiet. We believe in this Bible. And I said, what happened two days ago? I said, I led him to the Lord. Though your sins are scarlet be, if you confess even at the last moment, God will forgive his sins. What I am trying to say. We should not have false faith, false hope. If you have that, what will happen is, a day will come, Satan will want you to say, God forsue me. God of God says, I will never leave you. I am with you even unto the end of the world. So that is what they should have done. When that man died. They should have been singing songs. So I gave the word, I told them to continue to sing, that changed the whole scenario, then many pastors came, I don't know, Pentecostal or something, whatever it is, they were all giving some word and all that, finally he was buried, I went home. What I wanted to say. This is what Satan wants. They have a religion. They believe they have got faith. At the end, you are blaming God. Who is responsible? What happened to your faith? Why don't you accept saying that, Lord, you have given me husband, but now you have taken it, I have got deep sorrow, but have mercy upon me. May God speak to us. We have got this enemy. World is an enemy. Satan is a very big enemy, they both work together. One more enemy is there, we will see tomorrow morning, God willing. It is a very dangerous enemy. Because it is inside us. The flesh. Shall we pray? Brother, give then.
Before we pray, just a few announcements. Soon after this meeting, all are requested to stay back for food and fellowship. And soon after the lunch, we have sisters meeting. So all can come, sit both sides, no problem. And few sisters are required to help us in washing and cleaning. And brothers, we will also help in cleaning. So we can help you to attend the meeting. Please help us, so that the next meeting can go on. And then evening, you again gather here at seven o'clock. So that we can have more time for the message. Also, we learn some songs. Tomorrow again, morning at ten o'clock, we have the meeting. Again, after lunch, we have sisters meeting. And again, evening, we have meeting at six forty-five. Wednesday, again, we have a Bible study morning meeting at ten o'clock. And there won't be sisters meeting on Wednesday. But directly, we have a Thanksgiving meeting, anniversary meeting, evening at six thirty. Especially Elchedai people have to come to worship God early. We are expecting little more people, so we want to also close early. So we thank the Lord for Sister Sumati Merari, she surgery for the second eye cataract was successful. Sumati Merari, thana rendavakannu yaka, chesta chikitsa operation jariindi, daanibatti pravukondanal. And secondly, today, it happens to be, today, on March twenty-third, okay, twenty-third March, there is a wedding anniversary of Doctor Varaprasad and Sister Geeta. And also Sister Geeta had successful surgery of her right knee. Geeta, thane yaka, kalu yaka surgery aindi, pravu dantlo sahainchisunthinar. They want to share the Thanksgiving and share sweets to all of us today. Pravu kurtaknle, varisantoshamanu, sandarthu punchkvalani, eerozu sweetsivalani, shapadthavuntinar. Shall we pray? Samelgar, kloptang pranjara. Pradhunjaskundam. Prarthancheskundam. Ma preemgalaparukununatani, udayikharunuchu. Gopatme, ya, vishyam, manu, ma korke, desukuchinati, gurane stotramlo, prabhu, evidanga, shodinpobanadu, e lokame, shodinchay, visyamga, undan, tan, nee, ma, gopasangatru, desukuchinati, gurane stotramlo, kurtakasru, chalisunam, pramala, sisters meeting, unda, ka, saangkalapu, maksidapattan, granchamanjepi. Megitaru, rendu dinalagoda, tan, nee, ekkumandachi, meem, prabhu, mari, me, vaakya, daru, me, hetan, vana, netpinchamanjepi, kurtakas, chalisu, ma prathana, ma prabhu nu, ma rakshkade, Yes Kristi, venamal, vedikuntunnam, tan, nee.
Amen. With the grace of the Lord Jesus Christ, love of God the Father, fellowship and communion of the Holy Spirit, be with us both now and forevermore.
Amen.
Praise the Lord, God bless you. Koncham payikella, rente, so brothers can go from this side, sisters can go from that side. So have full fellowship and sisters, wele, antamatukku, one day, she, meet, yoka, half noon session, udu, chusukoni, ellalan, korukunam.